It is six o'clock and we will call the order, the work session for the CIP September twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Roar? Mr. Hellinger? Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion to excuse Congressman Hill.
Is he not coming? Oh, he's not?
Yeah, he even got us.
Oh, I missed it. Okay, second. I thought maybe he was just late.
Kyle's not coming in here?
Boy, Kyle.
What?
He was just, there's this one for...
George, we don't know anything about Kyle yet, so...
Oh, okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Do you want to just wait a little bit on Kyle or?
I mean, you can always, if you want to excuse him, then if he shows up, we'll put in the record what time it's been. It's up to you.
Should we text them?
I do have, but there's a door.
Is it him? Is it him? Is it him?
Nope. There's a good feeling in it.
Back bike.
We were wondering if you were Kyle.
No.
Well, we can...
Can we make a motion to excuse him?
It's up to you guys.
Motion to excuse Councilman Roar.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. So we're gonna have some reviews and discussions tonight. Are you gonna lead this talk?
Yes, I'll just say, make a couple of quick comments, first being that this is really the first of two work sessions for the CIP. Tonight's session is really devoted to our major operating departments, Public Works, Public Utilities, and Parks. As part of the Parks presentation, we wanted to spend some time talking about the Oak Grove Cemetery Master Plan. There's been a considerable amount of work that's been put into that plan over the last year. There are a number of major policy recommendations and we want to try to get some direction from City Council about that. And we'll try to keep it higher level, but we do need, because that has been part of a public engagement process, we need some, some feedback and direction from Council. We'll lead off with Blake, then Bill, and then Ted, and Dean will do the Oak Grove part. Before you come forward, I just want to make a couple of general comments. One is, the CIP was, would benefited this, this year, this CIP with the additional gas tax. And Bill can talk about that and how that impacts our local streets program. The other part that's kind of the corollary to the additional gas tax is that in years, beginning in years twenty-one, or twenty-two, rather, we reflect, and it's reflected in the transportation budget, the additional money from the permissive license fee, which would require legislative action. This is the effort that Delaware led with our communities over the last couple of years to get the permissive fee ceiling increased. The county increased theirs earlier in the year. A number of communities have already done that. And I was talking with Carolyn and Kent as part of our agenda setting process earlier this week. We'll want to get that before City Council. It would not go into effect until for the twenty-one registration year. So even if you passed it tonight, or sometime this year, up until sometime, before June, July first of next year, it doesn't impact until the twenty-one registration year. But the increase in dollars from the permissive fee, that combined with the increase in gas tax, gets us close to a million dollars of new money that we're dedicating at this point to local road resurfacing. You can, you can elect to put it into other transportation programs, but for, for purposes of our discussion and what's reflected in this plan is it would go into road resurfacing and local road resurfacing. So that really is a, I wouldn't say it's a game changer, but it's a fairly significant shot in the arm for the city. And you can thank Governor DeWine and the legislature for doing that. The permissive fee was all done at a local level, and as you remember, counties got the authority this year, last year, and then this year, the city's got the authority. So that's, that's good news.
And Tom, are we planning on getting that on your agenda soon to start?
Yes, as soon as Council wants it. I mean, I would, again, it has to be adopted to take effect. It's gotta be adopted sometime before, sometime, you know, this year or next year. It's really up to Council to provide direction.
I've seen a reason to hold off. Just throw it on the next agenda. Let's just get it done.
I mean, it doesn't, it will not impact anybody's registration until the twenty-twenty-one registration year, so. Powell recently did it, Columbus has done, and other communities have done it. So, and that's, that helps. It raises about two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars. Another, a couple of other things I just wanted to draw your attention to. We, we did a, there were only a couple of areas where there were some recommendations made, in particular by the Fire Department regarding some long-range planning, that was included as a part of an annex, an appendix to this CIP. And John, hopefully for the September thirtieth work session, we can have some discussion about that. That's really some future long-range planning as far as, as fire station planning, as well as they're looking for a training center. Right now, the Delaware area Career Center, where the training center previously was, it's up in the air as to whether that's gonna continue over there. So Chief Donnie, who has recommended that we consider doing that, and we can, but there's a, there's a price tag associated with that, and anyway, it's not included as a, as a budgetary item, but it's in there. A couple of other points that we can talk about these later is parking. You received from Vice Mayor Schaefer last month a recommendation regarding parking and putting, reinstituting meters in the downtown along Sandusky Street. This is a recommendation that came out of the Parking Master Plan two years ago, and it's one that is, is being recommended, and staff is internally looking at that right now. Kyle's leading that effort. That's gonna have a price tag associated with it. That's not reflected in here because it was somewhat premature in terms of what, what we were looking at, but that comes with some policy discussions, A, about putting the meters back, and B, about what that cost is gonna be, how are you gonna price it, those types of things. So we need some time with Council to discuss that. There's no parking structure appropriation and it's not reflected in here. We have had discussions with one of the hotel developers. That will have implications for the city from a capital planning, from a capital appropriation standpoint, but we're still kind of in the, we have, we're making some good progress with our negotiations with them, but we'll have to come back with you, come back to you at some point to talk about the implications, the budget implications of a, of a, not the hotel as much, but the parking garage that would be attached to the hotel. And this is the project that would be on the city property next to the Justice Center. City Hall, I'll provide through Kyle tomorrow an update on our renovation plans for the balance of the space here and on the first floor and on the ground floor. We, we spent a lot of time focused on getting planning moved out. Now that they're moved out, the kind of, there's an effort to try to get some, some substance around what we're gonna be recommending to City Council and what, what that's gonna look like. So that's not reflected in here either, but we can, we'll provide an update tomorrow. Another, two other things real quickly. The Strand Board has talked about an arch over by the Strand Theater. This is something the mayor's aware of, and I think I've, I've provided in previous updates about this. This would match the Bunz Arch, and it would have a sign for the Strand Theater as well as that, that district there. And there's been some discussion about whether it should go right there where the Strand Theater is, whether or be at the, at the corner of Hen, Union Street and Winter Street. That's not reflected in here, but the Strand is going to be making a request to the city for, they will cover the cost of the arch itself and the sign. They would like the city to consider the cost associated with getting the, the area ready for, for that. So that's, that's not reflected in here. And, and then finally, Dave Eflin provided an update the other night about the Steering Committee, Delaware Together, that comprehensive plan, Steering Committee, the work they're doing. Some of those recommendations they will be making to City Council as part of that, that'll happen sometime next year, will have implications from the standpoint of utilities and things like that. So that's just some, that'll be, there'll be some further discussion about that at some point. But that's just some additional, it's just some additional comments about, about the budget. But with that said, are there any comments, thoughts? I know a number of you have hopefully taken time and take a look at the CIP and go through it. We're gonna focus tonight, as I said, in utilities, public works, and the cemetery. But if there's any other, any questions or comments?
Just one?
Yeah.
So I was just looking at the General Fund summary, kind of taking a broad view at first. And I know that the further we get out from the current year, the less the numbers are necessarily accurate. But some of these seem really wacky to me. Two thousand twenty-four, the balance forward there?
Uh, okay.
Because the, in the year before...
Which page you're on?
I'm sorry, I'm on page...
Page one?
Yeah, page one.
Okay.
So the year before, we have zero under street improvements in two thousand twenty-three?
Right.
Then I went to that, that page in the, so page six, and there was a zero there also, and I'm kind of wondering if that's...
Right, that...
We don't truly...
That's a bond paid off, isn't it?
It says CIP allocation zero. Is that...
Right, if you take a look at the, what we're nodding, what, what drops off after twenty-two are the city's local match for the resurfacing program, the urban resurfacing programs. We're still allocating, if you look on page six, under local streets, we're still reflecting a payment, I mean, not a payment, but an appropriation for the local street program.
Right. But so then what?
So you have some, you know, theory, you have some flexibility because...
Right.
In the transport, in that area, because in, under city match, if you take a look on page six, city match is two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in two thousand twenty, and the, and it, you know, it drops off. And in part, that's because the East Williams Street project was requiring a contribution from us that we will no longer have.
So...
Do I have that correct, Dean, in terms of what that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what Lisa's question is.
I think it's really just the balance.
Well, I know what I'm always searching for is opportunities. And so I'm wondering if, did we find an opportunity here for things in several years? Jim, you're nodding your head. You follow that up?
Yeah, I actually have that circled. It looks like we're spending less on local resurfacing after two thousand twenty. The CIP allocation goes down each year, and it goes to zero in two thousand twenty-three and then up to three hundred thousand. So page six, CIP allocation, you know, so yeah, twenty-twenty is strong, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that goes down a little bit each year.
Right, what that, that represents, that's not local street resurfacing. That's actually what comes out of our discretionary income tax from that first page. And that's kind of a filler back in there to cover whatever costs are proposed. If you go down to the expenditure side, you'll see that local streets resurfacing is eight-hundred thousand in twenty-twenty. It's about the middle of the page, nine-hundred thousand, nine-hundred, nine-hundred, and nine-hundred. And what Tom had indicated is in the past, we had had some larger numbers coming as a subsidy from our General Fund to our Street Maintenance and Improvement Fund, primarily because we had some larger grant activity that was out there. And in the outer years, we don't have those in this or identified, so the amount needed to come from the General Fund isn't as high as it's been. Plus, we're getting the additional million dollars of gas tax money, so that has an impact on that.
And really, total revenue stays relatively stable except for two thousand twenty-three. Okay, all right. Cool, I know I had a similar, because I was like, where's, where's it going?
Right.
I mean, it's a question, could you allocate, could you allocate? What you're saying is, could you allocate that to other transportation projects perhaps?
Yes.
And you've got, the General Fund contribution does drop, so...
Okay. Just, I was sort of looking broad level, like what do the next five years look like? And where is opportunity for us to maybe get some of those projects out?
And I think you'll hear from Bill that there's, there's definitely some projects out there that are gonna require that type of contract, that kind of a local match, so.
Okay, just checking my understanding that they're looking up.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Blake?
Madam Mayor?
Hold that microphone up, babe.
Members of Council, does anybody else feel like we just did budget season? Am I the only one? Okay. Do you have me back? Thank you. So we're starting with the water fund capacity for you guys at page sixty-four at the bottom. Nothing on this has actually changed from what was approved last year, so I don't know if you guys have any specific questions. All right. I'll just touch real quickly, the, the large project that we're starting into in two thousand twenty is the US, or the panhandled US forty-two main project, installing redundancy in our system. Just so you know, this, this year's portion was to garner design services. That RFP package's about to go out. We have about five consultants who are on board, waiting for it, ready to bid, so the next phase will, will be ready for next year. I, I have not really placed too much into the two thousand twenty-four. We, we do have one project we came up with, but we have the master plan looking to be revamped in two thousand twenty-one, and a lot of our plans should really wait until that's redone. That's gonna, that's gonna really let us know where our focus should be going forward. That's, that's what I have for past yet, unless there's any questions.
I had a question, more for Dean, though, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Hey Dean, page sixty-four, under debt service, like the Kingman Hill Tower. I look at the interest rate in the year. Is that something we can refinance as well? Or is that, I know you stay on top of this stuff, but I was just wondering, I don't, I, I don't know this world, but I was just wondering if that's something that, you saved us a bunch of money doing it a few months ago?
Yeah, we're constantly monitoring all those, those issues that are outstanding, and again, to see if there's an opportunity to refinance. I'm gonna check on something too, because that may have been something I didn't go back after. We refinanced and changed the, what it says in there, because I've been the same for a number of years, but it may have been money that, I think we did refinance it, I just didn't change the percentage rate, so.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, no, no. We could put a second mortgage on the water plane.
Those I don't show in here. That's a, that's Blake's slash fund.
Seventy-six. We are moving on to water maintenance. For reference, we had the, the West Water Tank painting that was supposed to be done this year. The actual project cost came back about a hundred thousand dollars higher than was budgeted. So we went ahead and just pushed that back next year, reallocated the extra a hundred thousand dollars into the project. So that is looking to be, all contractor estimates are currently coming back at about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do power washing and painting of the full tower. That's just an FYI and why that's still in the CIP. Also, the, the future water tower paintings have been bumped up as well to, just to reflect that. And as you're going to see when Bill comes up here, the, the new five-year street resurfacing program is, is very substantial. And so while it hasn't been able to take in, been taken into account yet in ours, our, our small main and fire flow line items will be increasing in years going forward just to try and keep up with the roads that are being resurfaced, so. Given the opportunity, we'd like to replace lines if they need replaced before they get resurfaced, so. That's just a heads up that that will be changing, even though we, they still look status quo for this year's CIP. There just wasn't enough time to really get our hands on it. I've got his entire list marked up for lines we need to start investigating, so. It is, it is being handled on our end as well. The communication is there between us, so. Elaine ninety-one, if you could. Unless there were questions there.
My pages are different than your guys' pages.
Yep, I'm sorry.
So you don't...
Yes, you guys, if you would go to page eighty-four, please.
It wouldn't be a CIP or a budget without a page number, so.
Well, it's not. It's...
Well, no, they're...
It's a PDF document.
The PDF, yeah.
PDF.
You all have them, unlike last year.
No, we're good.
I, I went and listened to last year's tape. We spent a lot of time on, on that. They're, they're all marked here.
And I think last time I even had a different version than you guys.
Yeah, it was, yes.
It was bad. This is sewer capacity. Again, nothing has been changed on the front end from last year's document, and nothing actually really added to the back end either. The project for next year, we're looking at the Spring Street Sewer. That is a, currently it's a pinch point for all the areas on the, on the west side that are coming this way towards the plant. So getting that increase is going to stop some of the localized flooding that occurs now and then. I know some of you have seen that some, you know, occasionally during heavy rains, that that area can get a little... I've seen manholes off their castings, and that was before I got the job, and I went, oof. Applying for this was a good idea, but that, that is to resolve that. Any questions? No. Sewer maintenance, Elaine ninety-four, everybody else eighty-seven. Sewer fund maintenance, there are, this probably does look quite a bit different than last year. Brad was also the plant manager in his role, and now that we have a new plant manager, some of the areas of focus and some of the items we're focusing on in the plant have been changed a little bit, and so we're really, you know, starting our own rolling of everything. So this, the, the plant section, the wastewater treatment projects, that, that's probably gonna look a little different to, to you guys. Some large items of note, the aeration tank diffusers, that's, for the next two years, that's a project we'll be doing. They are at their lifespan. It, them being less efficient because of age causes the blowers to work harder and have to push harder really to open them up and let air out. This should drop the RPMs the blowers have to, to spin at, effectively, hopefully, saving us some power along the way. And, and that was really the purpose of those blowers, if you remember, the turbo blowers even being a part of the CIP as well, was to lower, and they, they did a great job. They, I think they dropped the utility bill something in the ballpark of five thousand dollars a month. So any, any more we can just still keep bringing down, that'd be, that'd be the point of that project. Also, we have the belt filter press replacement listed in two thousand twenty-one. It, it's a much-needed process of thickening sludge so we can get it out of here without paying to, to haul too much water. But this machine is old. It's, it's getting extremely hard to fix. We're starting to eBay parts for it, and repairs is just not going well. There are alternative technologies I want to look at for its replacement, not just, not a belt filter press. We can get somewhere in the ballpark of seventeen to eighteen percent solids out of the belt filter press. The county is, strictly uses centrifugal drawing methods, and, and when I was there, we were getting closer to twenty-four percent solids. That's, may not sound like a lot, but it, it's more topsoil. I mean, if it's dry, you could, it may sound gross, but you could pick it up and it could, it could sift through your fingers. It's a much different project, product, and you're paying that much less for all the weight of water to be taken to either the landfill or to the processing center. So it does save a lot of money getting that thickness up.
That's a dirty job.
It is a dirty job. But it's...
Blake, could you just explain basically where, where it goes from here and some of the questions?
Sure, so at the moment, we have a contract with an outfit called Renergy. They have, they are, they, they take our biosolids and they, they make power with it, or in, or they process it, and then they sell it to farmers, and farmers can land apply. But the city entered into a contract with them. Tom, do you know the date?
It was several years ago. We have a current contract which goes for another couple of years.
Yes, and, and this, this contract saved the city a lot of money actually, as opposed to just paying landfill fees. And so we, we don't know how much longer we get to enjoy it. We, we landfilled our, our biosolids prior to this contract, but for the moment, it, it's a, it's a good thing for us. That whole industry's in flux, though. It's, it's along the same lines as, as the pig farmers that you, up in Marion County, because that's, that's the general area they're at, and they don't make a nice footprint or a nice presence. They're, they're stinky as well, and neighbors complain, and EPA has their, you know...
And Renergy has been facing some, yeah, some local opposition to what they're doing, and that has the potential of impacting us at some point. Hopefully it won't, but it could.
There's, there are just a remote number of times this year when they have been unable to accept loads from us. So we have had to divert to the Cherokee Run landfill, which is upwards of twice as expensive to dispose. At the moment, I'm still reflecting in our budget, which it wouldn't be in the CIP, but that we are taking it to them. But at some point in the, in the, probably not too far future, that, that's gonna go back to what we were doing before we had this nice contract with, with Renergy.
Blake, irrespective of where it goes, the belt filter press is integral or not?
Absolutely, absolutely. So again, taking away five percent water content out of the sludge that we're hauling really cuts, because everything we do when we dispose of biosolids is based on tonnage. And yep, they weigh every truck, and it, it brings a lot of money back to the city. So for the same prices as most belt, belt filter presses, we'd be, we'd be sorry to at least not look at the options of alternative technologies to what we have now. So that's what we'll be doing. It's, it's more of a realm I'm familiar with anyways, and so I have high hopes for that project.
Blake? Are you done?
No, well, yes, go ahead.
So the page, towards the bottom page, total wa, wa, waste water projects. First year is a million two, and then around two thousand twenty-two, it gets cut about half, just goes down distinctly. Do we run out of water, wastewater projects, or do, what hap, what happens there? See what I'm talking?
Yes, I do. We are a little, a little front-loaded at the moment.
And our balance goes up, so that's, you know...
It, it does. We do have, in our, again, there, there was a realigning of, of what current staff's focus has thought there should be, and we've got a number of, of large pieces of equipment, integral portions of the plant that we don't think can wait any longer and just have to be, have to be hit. The settling tank upgrades, those have, those tanks have been running, the ones we're looking at have been running since, I believe, the seventies, and I won't walk out on them right now, personally. The, the, the structure itself needs looked at, really needs revamped, and they're large projects, but they're one-offs. You know, these, these aren't things you do every day. So we are front-loaded. You're right. I don't know if you had any other comment on that, Dean?
No, that's not unusual, because even with a five-year plan, the first couple of years, there's a little bit more certainty, and so the out-years, my sense is as we get to those out-years, a year or two, the numbers will go up, so. That's typically what occurs.
Thank you. We are doing our best to give you a real picture of what's coming, though. My personal spreadsheet copied this, and Dean's copied. Mine goes out about fifteen years. So I, we are really doing our best to, to plan and to really get a picture of what's, what's coming. Just, just so you know, we're not, just...
I know.
Any other questions on this one?
Just looking for money for roads.
Making room for the roads affecting me, right?
That's right, absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Elaine, you are one-ten. Everybody else is one-oh-three. And this is stormwater. So most of this should look pretty familiar from last year. I do want to say the US twenty-three storm repair, that is, that is a new item, but that was also initiated by ODOT. We are required, and, and I'm sure Bill can speak on this much better than I, but we are required when US twenty, or when ODOT comes through these areas and works on the freeway to, to pay our portion of what needs fixed, even though they are saying it's going to get fixed. We just have to put in our allocation. So this was called to me, I think ODOT called and worked with Public Works, and last month I was called and said, hey, this is going, you know, ODOT has decided the work is happening. So that's why this is new. That's why it wasn't forecasted in years prior. You'll see, we, on the tail end, we added cemetery storm pipe. That's, it's kind of a blanket number at the moment, because I don't know how familiar you guys are with, with that stormwater pipe in the cemetery, and I'm sure Dean's gonna talk, talk on this topic much more later, but that's a quandary of a mess right there, so. That is a blanket number, and I don't know what that number's gonna turn into in the future, just so you know. That could be way high, that could be way low. It's just there.
The one project that's not shown here that we might include in twenty is, you've heard of the Shortcut Alley Project. There is a component of that project that the city has agreed to in terms of the, the new drainage system through there, and it's an appropriate use of stormwater funds. So that's a partnership with Main Street where they're actually looking at... So that's a partnership with Main Street where they're actually looking at some improvements with, I think they're an arch or something and, and we've looked at it from the standpoint of putting drainage in there, so we'll, I, I don't know if we can, we'll probably not get that under, you know, obligation this year, it'll probably be next year. But, so that might probably add that and it's, I don't know whether twenty-five thousand.
Bill, you had estimated it, I, I think it's a?
Costs were like twenty-five to thirty for the sidewalk pavement placement and probably about five thousand, seven, seven hundred of that would be like storm sewer line underneath it.
I think I'd actually assume that to just be out of the actual operating budget.
Right, right.
That's the other option, sure. Yep, I don't have anything else noted for myself unless, open to questions. All right, thank you.
Fisher Poplin's at.
Cleveland.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Cutting that out?
Yes.
All right. Long stay.
He came from there.
Yeah, he came back, yeah.
This is important.
We could've done, we could've Skyped, I know, well, I didn't know if we were gonna do the third yet, so we're all ready.
Good. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Stop the canes on your way out of there.
You can't get in. You can't get in.
You can't, just takes thirty-six minutes, I know.
Hey, that's quicker than Taco Bell though, on twenty-three sound, I'm just kidding.
Thirty-six, not thirty-five?
Thirty-six and three part time officers to direct traffic.
I was like the other day, got right in.
Still?
Yep, five o'clock.
There's still officers?
Not lunchtime, one o'clock, one police officer.
I thought that was just opening day.
At night, there's multiple police, the lines are.
They said they hired them for the whole week.
They didn't, they didn't have that many when they opened.
Now it's all the way out onto the main road out from the shopping centers there, packed up.
Does that say there's a dearth of, of restaurants?
Yeah, we need restaurants on that side.
Pent up demand for, uh.
Restaurants, uh, just to get back with you Jim on the, on the question on that debt, yes, I didn't change the title there, but we did refinance, refinance at two thousand seventeen, the interest rates, two point four three percent for the remainder of it and two point six three five if we call it to maturity, so. The other thing, and I didn't update it in the sewer fund capacity, because when we printed this, we hadn't gotten the final pricing, but I had in there under Southeast Highland Sewer, the heading says fifteen million, which was the original principal and four point four nine percent. And then I had eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars for five years, cause that's what I thought it was going to be, it was like nine eighty. But we did actually price better and those numbers will be about eight twenty-nine, so it'll be even less and I'll try to update that, on page eighty-four.
Okay, I have something else I can cross off then. Cool, thanks Dean.
One other note, and I know Tom necessarily didn't, it may come up a little bit later, cause you did mention that, that alley project. There were some of those that kinda came in at, at, at capital planning time, plus it seems like there's, those things pop up throughout the year. So one of the kind of change we did, we did with the capital planning is in that general fund summary, or summary, there's a new category in there called unanticipated projects. That doesn't create any alarm, but our game plan is, thing, our game plan is that, that we know there'll come, things will come up and then we, we should probably plan for it and not say, well, and it could be a situation that comes up for whatever reason, instead of cutting something else out or waiting till next year's process, we have a little flexibility to perhaps do those right away, so. And then that, there were a couple of them that probably would fit into that category or would have. And I think if that occurs in the future, it'll be something we'll probably come back to council and say, this is something that really wasn't thought about in the past and we have some availability yet in those unanticipated funds that are appropriated and, you know, suggest that we utilize it, so.
Is there a percent of revenue that you're considering to use for that fund, I mean, what's the?
Well, it's, it's, it's coming out of that general allotment that we, we refer to on page one as our general fund summary. The revenue source is the amount of money that we take out of our general fund, basically it's income tax collections and divert that to capital plans, our capital projects. And, and so that's the source of the revenue is just our general income tax revenue. And it's completely discretionary, so there's no, unlike a lot of these other cost centers, water revenues, you know, some of those other things can only be spent on specific purposes, so even though I know you're looking for road money, can't come out of the water fund.
Speaking of road money.
Yeah, great segue. All right, I just wanted to hit highlights, I got, just put some PowerPoint so you can see some pictures with it, break it up a little bit. Some highlights of, of the different funds that I'm responsible for, so. Left is the Fond Airport Fund and I have reference to the page number on each one of these slides, so you can find it. And it should be the page that has the chart on it with all the numbers and the years on it. So if you have other, other projects you wanna talk about, just raise your hand and we'll go through those. I tried to pick out the ones I thought you may wanna have some interest in. So really at the airport, we're talking three big projects included in this CIP. The first is this T hangar paving project, it's really just taking care of the pavement between each of the T hangar buildings. Those six, the first three were originally moved, I think in nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-one. The second set of pavement was about seven years after that. So the pavement in that area is twenty, twenty-five, coming up twenty-five to thirty years old, it's in really bad shape. FAA will pay the majority of those costs, but that's the project cost right there. Second big project up there is what we call Ramp B, that's where a lot of our single engine planes are, are parked overnight and also services jet streams hangar and potential other future hangars on either side of it. Again, this pavement is eighteen years old, it's in really poor shape and we need to replace that. And then on the far right, you're seeing what we call Corporate Drive Project, that's taking what essentially is a gravel driveway, turning it into a full paved access driveway, so we can then support pavement behind it here against the jet stream and then make way for access for a future hangar project here. And this is to really provide alternative cars right now driving across our ramps to get to those facilities. We really gotta get the cars off of mixing where the aircraft, especially where the jet aircraft are going. So those are three large airport projects we're gonna see over the next five years. And the first phase of the T hangar paving will happen, is coming up.
One thing, Bill, you wanted to just mention the, the corporate hangar, there was some interest in having, Jex had extra, actually expressed an interest in a corporate hangar. We haven't heard a whole lot about that lately.
Right, we have actually three entities that are interested in a hangar, either in this location here or this location here on this big apron, which is designed to service another large corporate hangar. Jex is one of them, Spear Aeronautics is another one that's comes and goes with interest. And then there's a third party that operates a life flight type operation that's interested potentially in locating here. So our business plan talks about this and actually highlights that, that it's a great location for another hangar. Also talks a bit about the public-private partnership, should the city be involved in building the hangars and renting the hangars? All that's part of that discussion, but that's the spot, we have, we have space there for probably close to, I wanna say sixty thousand square feet of additional hangar space there, which is fairly substantial. So we're set up nicely if we can, if we can attract that right business.
Do you wanna mention the A and P contract, the maintenance, just cause it's, we're on that?
Sure, our, if you're familiar with the airport, I think it was been out there, this hangar right in here services our air, air, airframe and power plant maintenance, which is just basically the guy out there who fixes airplanes. It was Shamrock and that recently entered into a new contract with a new provider out there. And they're actually moving in right now and beginning to service aircraft. So we're real pleased to have been able to close that gap out there and get a very quality business out there.
What's the name of the company?
I just knew you were gonna ask that.
It's Aero Precision.
Aero Precision, thank you. They came in as Buckeye and then they got away from the name Buckeye, so Aero Precision, unlimited.
I was out there last Friday, met the mechanic, really nice guy, really wants to.
Great ethic.
Yeah.
Um, great business plan, so we're real pleased to have you. Uh, if there's nothing else in the airport, I'll move on to the next.
Just, uh.
Streets?
One other comment, and Bill kinda touched on it a little bit, or Tom did, about that corporate hangar area and should the city get in the business of building it and they'll come. I mentioned a couple entities, but over the years, we've had a number of people interested in putting facilities out there, but a lot of those businesses, for whatever reason, capitalization or other things, don't always wanna own, plus you need to have a land lease and things like that. We've got a few more years yet to pay on the hangars that we built several years ago and finance those, a little over a million dollars. And that's, at its point, it's cash flowing out and then so it's generating revenue. And at some point, it's a takeoff to even the business planning that we've done out there, we may need to consider if we build it and, and leasing it out, because that does spur on that, those improvements probably, as many possibilities as we've had, it's always kinda been a hang up a bit about who's gonna build, who's gonna own, how long, you know, are they gonna be able to be there? But, you know, it's something to consider moving forward.
To that point, I was out in the field last week, on Friday, visited Kevin Pyatt, the airport manager, he, he echoes that. His, his view of it is we could, he thinks we could get more jet traffic through there and if we had that corporate presence, that corporate airport hangar presence. And we did that pretty successfully with our, with our T hangars, but we haven't done it on the other side with the corporate, the corporate world. So there isn't, you know, that's probably one of those business decisions at some point that we wanna talk to council about.
And, and again, why would we, you know, it, it's, it's not just that I think we could generate more positive cash flow out there to help keep that airport self-sustaining, but it, it's the spinoff benefit that we've always talked about out there in airport. Why we participate with a lot of the FAA grants is that we've got a little bit, something that not everybody has from an economic development tool. You get that presence out there, even if the, the company's not based here, at some point they're flying in and out, because that's where their aircraft are, they see the, the community and, and that's that intangible side to it that, that it, it can make a lot of sense, but I think we're at the point too where it's not very risky that it would pencil out like our T hangars did anyways, so it'd pay for itself.
Good. Okay, streets, page six is the funding sheet, but I wanted to, obviously, I wanna talk about resurfacing first. I'll just say, yesterday, Tom, myself and Matt Weber were down at the track presenting for a request for additional funds, but I had a chance afterwards to, to run down the director, State Director Marchbanks and just, first of all, just thanked him for his initiative with the gas tax. He went on a limb there with the governor to do something that wasn't very popular in politics, but he got it done and I wanted to make sure that Delaware, he didn't know how much that meant to Delaware, just that little increment. And, um, so he understands that, he does remember Delaware, he worked here for years, right on East, East Williams Street, so. Hopefully, hopefully that helps out with our track request. Anyway, street resurfacing, I'll draw attention right to the top, we're, you know, we're projecting about two point one, two point two million dollars per year over the next five years of revenue for resurfacing, that's up from the one point two that we were, that we've been spending. And the difference is, is the gas tack, gas tax and projecting the license fee revenue also. That adds just under a million dollars of additional revenue available. So you can see in the green box, I've broken it down where that funding would be spent and those are the ma- major categories right now, so local streets, CDVG is just, that's the average annual we get through that grant program, plus committing additional nine hundred thousand dollars, mostly gas tax dollars, gives us just under a million dollars of local street program. We were at that one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars max before, so it's a pretty substantial increase. How substantial addresses, the big lists that we've shown of all the bad streets address sixty percent of what we call our backlog in streets, of the, those roads that are, that are near failed or have failed. So it does make a pretty good dent in that, it doesn't take care of all of them, which means we're adding streets into that list every year and we're not catching up, but, but a million dollars more is a million dollars more and it does, it does start us slowing down that degradation. The list we have of the bad streets, there's still some really important roads in there like Bernard, Bowtown, Channing, Lincoln, North Washington, North Franklin, Hills Miller, we don't have money to pave all those streets. And those are all important streets too, we just received complaints on Bowtown Road the other day about the condition, but the money's not enough money to go as far as we need it to go. But we also have eighty-some streets that we are on a list that are gonna be paved now that we didn't have money to pave. So I wanted to show on the bottom too, just, you know, for our reference, that these are, these are the categories down here of the streets that we have in town, the mileage, but most importantly is, if you look at locals in the bottom, we hope a street can last twenty-five or thirty-five years with the proper maintenance. So we should be paving two point six to three point six miles per year and at current cost, we'd be spending one point four to two million dollars. Two million dollars if they only last twenty-five years, one point four if they could last thirty-five years. So we're probably in the middle of that range somewhere. So if you look at all the streets, we're at two point nine to four point one, so on average, we should be at about three million dollar program would be a really good goal, I think, as a community to get to. We're at two point one, so we're not, it's not like we were a few years ago, like how will we ever get there? But now you can actually see a target, like if we get this farther, much further along, we may have what we could call a sustainable program if we spend it wisely, able to maintain that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So then what, what's the impact if we continue building streets or annex new property and add more streets?
Yeah.
Obviously that gets even more stretched out.
It's a great question, because what happens is, all the streets that are these new streets that were, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, that's a lot of your Lexington Glen Locust Curve, well, they're on that bubble now of saying, hey, in two or three years, we're gonna have to pave them. Well, we're spending all the money we got for gas tax on these streets. So if you get eight or ten more streets in the next year or two that have to be paved, they're not gonna be paved, because we've already spent the money for the next five years. So we're still, we're still sliding backwards, but we're sliding backwards a lot slower, because we have some money there now. So we've, we, in a sense, we bought ourselves a little bit of time to try to keep on this challenge of, how do we get to a sustainable roadway surfacing, resurfacing program? And because we able to throw, with the gas tax revenue and potentially license fees, it's, at least we have a program now. But I, I'd be, I'd be doing it to service the community if I didn't say it's, it's still not enough, we still, there are roads here that we just aren't gonna be able to get to with our current level of funding, but at least we can get to some.
That's hard conversations and considerations we have to have as we're considering large annexations and adding new streets and new subdivisions that aren't already in the pipe, because we are sliding backwards.
Keep, keep in mind though, the, the issue is fundamentally, there never was the level there to maintain, going way back. And, and then part of the challenge was the last ten, fifteen, twenty years was trying to catch up. But yes, we're adding streets in those areas, but we're also adding more license fee money, we're adding more income tax money, cause those people are paying taxes. So you ask yourself, is the revenue per capita that's attributable to road maintenance being, does, does growth increase that or not increase that? Not just that it increases our inventory, because arguably at some point, the type of growth we're getting may be increasing the amount available, because the newer houses, people are paying higher taxes and maybe they have three cars instead of one car in some places. So it, it's not just saying that growth compounds his problem. His problem is, is that fundamentally, the, the money necessary to maintain streets isn't probably where it needs to be. And, and adding more doesn't necessarily make that in and of itself worse. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
No, we have to, I, I think we have to be smart about what kind of growth that we're accepting. And, I mean, in general though, we've all agreed that residential development doesn't tend to pay for itself. It tends to require more in services than we're collecting in income tax. Okay.
Thank you for that question. Anything else on this, at least on the street slide, got several more here. Under, we're still on the streets, same page, I wanted to highlight a few projects we've talked about for several years. First is, you probably recognize what we call is the bin wall, it's that big steel wall as you come off the ramp, it looks, it's terrible entrance into the city.
Ugly.
But that is, ODOT will, either next year or the year after, they will, that's being added into a larger scale bridge rehab project, all up and down twenty-three. So that work will be done, it will be overlaid, it'll be, be soil pinned, you don't have to worry about, know about that, but it'll be overlaid with architectural concrete, stamped concrete to look more like a limestone wall as you come down through there. It won't be taken out, it'll just be covered over. And that project will really clean that area up, along with that project, just below that is the, you've seen probably the pier in the middle of twenty-three right now, holding the bridge up. You know, in general, the pier is probably good for a hundred and fifty years, but the outside just looks terrible and crumbling. We just talked with ODOT and again with the same project of work on twenty-three, they've agreed to take on that as part of their work, we'll pay for it, but we'll get much better pricing when a bridge contractor is doing several million dollars of work and this one little piece in there may, will be, be very effective use of our dollars and no use of our on-staff technical team. So it's that, we just found that out literally about a week and a half ago, so that's, that's worked out very well. Also, we have a number of, they're not specifically listed in the, the document, but additional RFB, the same as the Liberty Street, Wesleyan Crossing, the flashing lights, number of additional intersections along the trail, one on Hauk at Cobblestone, where we've had some complaints, Pennsylvania Euclid. Pennsylvania Euclid, we had a number of complaints there, that's not the only place that can be installed, but these are places that we thought definitely warrant this type of installation, and that's just a picture there of the one by Wesleyan Campus, then the bottom is just, it's just a picture of, I'm not even sure if there is or not sidewalk outside of Typhoon, that needs to be repaired, but we are allocating $150,000 next year of, to address the downtown sidewalk issue, we did sweep, make a sweep, gosh, Tom, it was probably eight years ago or so, 10 years ago.
And we indicated at that time, that was really, after that, it was really the property was responsibility, it's not fair to have asked our residents to pay and not have the property owners in the downtown pay, so we sent a letter out last fall indicating that we'd be, you know, starting the program, and it probably made sense to hopefully bundle it so you can have property owners agree that we should do this uniformly as opposed to doing some here and some here.
Our goal for the process will be try to have property owners allow us to make, make the repairs with one contractor at one time, they have the right through the higher vice code to do it on their own and conform to our standards, but we'll send a letter out probably later this year and let them know next year this project's going to come up, and you can see that it's, it's weighted more towards the private, there's more private repair responsibility than public, ours is largely the concrete that's dropped around those tree wells, and then we also need to address the tree wells ourselves, so.
And the brick is ours too.
The brick is ours and the tree wells, so we're going to kind of comprehensively try to clean up all these tripping hazards downtown next year, it's, it's, it's an overdue project, but it's a difficult project, and it's going to impact things like these outdoor patios, and it's work we can't do in winter, so we got to do it in the spring and summer when the patios are available, but fortunately, Mr. Eflin wisely wrote those agreements that if this type of thing comes up, they gotta, we'll take the patio down, push it aside, then they can set it back up afterwards, so that will happen, that's a good project.
So you think that'll happen in 2020?
Yes, that's our goal, but what we'll actually do is send letters out later this year, and at the same time, we'll bring a resolution, necessity before this body, and just ask if you can, that you approve that, that we can tell folks that city is determined that this has to happen, and then we'll notify them, we'll, we'll try to, in our letter, say it's best if we do it as a single project, but if you want to do it on your own, then we'll probably put a deadline like June 30th to have it done, so we can get the work done.
And will you make su- will we do the, the bricks and all that at the same time next year?
If they need it.
Well.
Well, I think you need to include that in the letter so that they know we're doing our part.
We'll, we'll let them know we're going to do tree wells and bricks too, but we may use some of our, our forces or a separate contractor to do some of the tree well work as opposed to having one contractor try to do everything, because the tree well's a little bit of a specialty as versus just the concrete work.
Right, okay. I think it's really important too to, to take into consideration those outdoor patios as much as possible, because, I mean, that might be in some cases, half of the capacity of their entire restaurant, and if that were closed on a weekend or, you know, just trying to really work with them to get that done during non-peak times.
And I think that.
Or Mondays when they're all closed.
Right.
I'm sure, but I think a number of the tripping hazards are outside that, they're in the travel area where people are, are walking as opposed to, but we'd have to see.
We have a, we have an assessment, but we'll, we'll probably take it to the next level to actually look specifically at the patio areas to see if we are disrupting them, and try to work a little more hand in glove with those property owners, those business owners, our goal isn't to disrupt them that much, but we get a number of complaints of people who've fallen and gotten hurt on the sidewalk, and it is a property owner's responsibility, but they really need the city to spearhead the project to make sure it gets done.
So Bill, are we doing like we did in residential areas, we're going through and inspecting for where there are hazards?
In the downtown areas, exactly.
So we're not just routinely replacing sidewalk, we're identifying where there are hazards.
Yes, yep.
And we've already, they're already, some of those are already marked, just, you know, with, with orange paint, but.
And something we've just fixed because of the nature of, you know, if it's a really severe problem and we don't want to let it wait, you know, six months or nine months, some things that are partly ours, if it's partly our, our responsibility, then we just go ahead and make the repair ourselves.
Thank you.
Well, the next is involving some updates on grants, it's, the sheet's on page 14, grant projects, and these are, again, are projects that largely are associated with some form of federal or state funding source augmented by our own funds, so I just wanted to update on the signals project, because we've, we've been talking about this now for probably three or four years, and we're finally in the last stage of design, identified all the right-of-way and easements that need to be acquired, and it turns out we'll have 37 intersections involved in this work, and the list of things out there are the types of, types of activities that are going to happen, but largely, the reason I put the diagram in the bottom is that's what this is all about, it's looking at the coordination and the phasing of these 37 signals and getting them current with our current traffic volumes, our distributions, and re-coordinating that whole system on the 37 signals, and so that project will be under construction in 2021, and it's, this is one project where you're not going to see a lot of ground tore up, very little actually, it's all in the cabinet, things on the pole, battery backup systems, preemption systems, it's really adding a lot of peripherals to the cabinet to make the whole signal system work better, and you will see a lot more cameras, the cameras that are basically of vehicle detection, and actually, the cameras we put out at both Winter and North Sandusky and Hough Road and Central are working very well, we're piloting two different types of omnidirectional or multidirectional cameras that can basically see the entire intersection at once, resolving a lot of the issues we've had with people not on the stop bar, ahead of the stop bar, behind the stop bar, it's picking up those issues, we're able to program the, the system to let it know, this is what you're looking for, and so we can still get the signal phasing to work accordingly, so it's worked very well, and it's eliminated two things, when we repave a road, we don't have to repay it, we don't have to put new loops in at about $1,500 apiece, and there could be eight, 10 loops in a major intersection, so it's a big savings there, and also during construction, you don't lose your loops, the signals continue to operate as normally even though you're doing construction underneath them.
I've got a couple of questions, is the land acquisition, is that just for boxes that we need?
It's mostly, it's mostly just easement to be able to do the work in areas, there's a couple of places, like I want to say the northwest corner of Euclid and West Central, where the, the pole is actually encroaching outside, so we need a small right-of-way take, but these are very, very minor takes in this project.
So those are probably not their questions, is there any way to speed this project up? We've been talking about it for a long time.
Yeah, it's just.
It just seems like it takes forever.
It does, it, it does take a long time, we, we had to inventory, then we had to count everything, and then through the programming, and now, right of way, it's, I was just talking to Mr. Weber today, it seems like federal projects are on a five to seven year timeframe, didn't follow the steps you have to, but it's 2.5 million dollars of, of money that we otherwise wouldn't have, so, you know, had we not got it, we'd still be talking about someday we should do these signals, so it's, sometimes it feels painful, those timeframes, but eventually, you get your 2342s done, your Pennsylvania Avenue projects and your East Williams Street projects, we just have to be patient and time, from our perspective, goes by fairly fast on these projects.
Are we updating the data since this system is going to go live till 2021 or 2022? Are we going to be updating data so we're not relying on 2018 data?
Yes, and, and I should mention too, that this, this system, the third bullet, adaptive technology means the signals a lot, we're not just telling it do this, it's looking at what's happening, it's counting cars at times of day, and it's going to adapt to and make changes to the phasing based on what it sees happening out there, whereas before, we'd say, you have 1,000 cars a day here, and when it gets to 1,500 cars a day, it's still trying to program at 1,000 cars a day, so adaptive technology is the future, it, it's reactive to traffic changes, and also, the equipment is, has the right frame in there for communicating, for connected vehicles, the next level of automotive technology will be able, this equipment will be able to talk to and integrate with that technology should it become more mainstream.
So we will own all this equipment once this is all said and done?
Yes.
And how long will this equipment last?
Well, we have, you know, a signal controller.
And ours is really old.
Yeah, we have some controllers out there that are 30 years old, and that's, I mean, they last until, just like our blank say, he's on his way to Cleveland, until you can't buy parts anymore, and that's how we are with some of our, some of our cabinets, when you can no longer get parts effectively or get warranty on it, then you need to have the whole signal upgraded, so probably 25 years or so is about as far as you're going to go, we're seeing such changes in technology though now, that it may be a shorter timeframe, but we're also seeing a lot more cloud-based type application, where we don't have to buy necessarily every component and horsepower and software and plug it into that cabinet, there's more cloud-based application, and sharing of equipment and, and software also, we're probably be presenting a little later this year in agreement with the county to actually work with the county and coordinate their signal system or our signal systems together, and sharing the costs of doing that, instead of us both having independent signal systems, it just makes sense to do that, changes in technology is what allows us to be able to do that.
That's where I was going, you know, the software that we, we keep buying, you have to have licenses for, is there, I don't know, there's just, I just think we spend so much money on this, and then before we can buy it, it's obsolete, and we have to turn around and buy again and again and again, it just seems crazy.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, software is what makes the world go around now, and that's, that controllers.
But is there a way to lease it rather than buy it?
I, you know, I, I would, I'd say it's just akin to your phone, you, people don't blink an eye now paying $600 or $800 for a new phone every couple of years, and the software's different and the camera's different, it's become part of our life, and it's the same thing with technology, building alarm systems, heating and heating systems, it's so dependent on these, it can do things a lot more and a lot more efficiently, but you have to update that software, and sometimes the hardware that goes with it a lot more frequently, you know, just like Dean's software with the, with the finance, we've got a lot of mileage out of that software, but things are moving a lot faster now in that realm, and you have to upgrade it, so, yes, in terms of the pole and the signal heads and things like that, a lot of that cost, it's there, and fortunately, that's the majority of cost in these is, is the hard parts, but the, the computers you see in that cabinet are what need to be upgraded, and that's what basically is in the cabinet, is a system of computers and controllers, and that's the guts of it that we need to upgrade from time to time.
Okay, thank you. May I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
The cameras that are part of the vehicle detection upgrades, just for the public so that there's no questions about that, they are not used for red light detection, nor are they the same kind of cameras, correct?
No, we can't, we don't record from them, they are similar to any camera that can look, actually look and record, or red light cameras, but you, they're not plugged into the component, we don't have the components in the system to do that operation, so it's just a camera, so we can look at the camera at Central or at Sandusky and Winter, we can internally see it operating, and we can check and make sure all the loops are operating, but we can't pan, tilt, zoom in, check a license plate, or record anything from it.
Just for all the masses watching on YouTube.
Plus, it's illegal, the red light cameras are illegal unless you want to station a police officer at the.
Right.
So.
I've heard a few people, they see them and they think that that's what they're doing, but they're not actually doing that, it's just a newer way to detect vehicles.
Right, so we don't have that technology here, you know, it's, obviously, it's in the courts, it's really unfortunate because there's so much evidence now that red light cameras clearly save lives, the, the evidence is there, but on the other end of it is, there's so much legality to whether you can hammer or not, whether it's intrusion, you know, where people, they're being taken out of places, but for our system, for the public, we can say, none of that's going on with our cameras, strictly vehicle detection.
Thank you.
This project is a new project, it's in the grant project, and this is Hull Drive and US 23 intersection, and, you know, where we had that fatality there, and it's, it's a high number of accidents at that intersection, it's in our US 23, ODOT master plan for approvals on 23 identified, and we have met with ODOT, and they believe it's time to initiate some of the changes there, not a full-blown right-in, right-out only, but to start preventing the cross movements and left turns on a hull drive both east and west, and that's what this project largely would do, so you can come on a hull drive from the west, turn south on 23, the same thing from the east, you can turn north, from 23, you can still turn left into both of those intersections, or both of those side streets, but you can't pull out or go straight across. The new signal system with, associated with Coghlan's Crossing, the new signals there and Hawthorne, offer so many new opportunities for alternate and safer travel and traffic patterns that ultimately, the folks there on Hull Drive will have better choices to go north than trying to pull out, cross four lanes of traffic, so we would apply for safety funds, or actually finish a small return on investment analysis, and then apply for an off-cycle safety fund application to try to get 90 or 100% of the cost of this project paid for with safety funds, I think it stands a pretty good chance because of the accident rate at this intersection, so this would be one that we would, it's a newer project in the CIP, and we'd like to begin to advance that.
Just a curious question, why wouldn't we also prohibit left turns here since there's lights down the way that you could turn left there?
The left turn's off of 23, we could, ODOT didn't feel, that's, that is not a movement where we have accidents, because you're only crossing, you're only looking at traffic one direction, there are gaps, and you're only crossing that one direction of traffic, it's the cross, it's the cross movement and the left turns where you're trying to watch a lot more, and that's where the accidents are, generally people pulling out from the side street, so the, the ultimate plan is a complete median closure, and it's certainly a less expensive project, but it introduces some real hardships to our businesses on both sides, and getting people in and out, especially on the east side of the road, so ODOT, ODOT, ODOT indicated that we should do this incrementally as their, as their plan would say, and go slowly, and not until the point where all, all accidents can be attributed to those movements, would you close it off completely, it also allows us time to develop east side access improvements as well, that would get alternative access to the dealership through the Coghlan's project.
So if you're on Hull Drive, I want to go north on 23, you either need to go to Cotswold, the Walmart Plaza has a light, or Hawthorne.
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Yep. And the same on the east side, you go, go south and through Coghlan's Crossing, through Merrick, or go north and come on to Old Tangi underneath onto Sandusky Street.
Thank you.
Okay, the Point project update, the reason I show the old bridge is because we have a number of artistic concepts of what a new bridge could look like, I don't want anyone to get too fixated on any one of those, because we're working out the, the type of bridge now, we do know it's going to be a single clear span with four lanes, rim for fifth lane and pedestrian facilities both sides, but we don't know if it's going to be a steel bridge, steel concrete bridge, and we don't want someone to get, get married to a look and then get disappointed when we show them something different, so you're seeing Yolbridge there, and, there's happening a train going across it, the top blue section just shows what our costs currently are, our design costs are right-of-way, anticipated, our anticipated construction costs, the construction is inflated with our news about the Norfolk Southern design requirements, the revenue to date that we're showing are, those are the sources there, including the recent Kroger source, and the Red Track $8 million request, which we just presented yesterday in person to, to ODOT committee, so we have a balance of projected cost and revenue, assuming that we do get all of the track funding, if not, we still have time before, you can see that on the far bottom right, year of construction is 2022, there's more track cycles between now and then to make more application, but we, we decided as a strategy to make every application, every year we can, apply for funds, and if they don't feel the project's just ripe enough yet, it hasn't proven itself yet, then we can make another application for the funding, and potentially even have additional private partners by then in the project too, it certainly helps the cause. I will say that we got decent feedback on the, on the presentation from the committee, I think it's a project they see the value in, it's a matter of, I forget the total number of projects they said, 70 or 80 projects.
They're looking at projects all around the state, so we're, it's very competitive, but, but the total amount of our local, of our ask as a percentage is like a third, right, of what we're asking for, so it's a fairly small ask relative to the total project cost, the other thing you mentioned is Morsy did rank it as number three out of seven track projects, the only two projects that ranked ahead of it was the Far East Side Freeway Project in a 33, 161, Union County, but this project was their third ranked project, which is.
So it's good news, I mean, it was, we got good support, I think, you know, we'll find out in mid-October.
Is that going to make announcements?
Yep.
And it might not be the whole amount, we're hoping that, but.
I was going to say, did you ask for eight, or did you just hoping to get eight, or?
No, we asked for eight.
Okay.
Yep.
But Matt jokingly asked me during his presentation, would we accept 7.7, now that we've got Kroger's 300, and we said yes, we would accept 7.7.
Does the right-of-way tail?
That's mostly just, mostly just acquiring additional right-of-ways.
And how many properties does that affect?
There's two, there's two total takes right now on the east side of the track, and there's a lot of, on the north side of the track, there's just a strip right-of-way, but it all has value to it, there's some driveway access. There's some driveway access takes east of the, of, uh, the railroad crossing as you go out towards five twenty-one. When we close the driveway, there's a value to that, to the business, so they get compensated for that. So there's a number of those, number of those types of activities.
Bill, you don't have the project limits up there, do you?
No, I don't.
This project goes all the way up to five twenty-one and then it goes.
North.
North on five twenty-one, so it's a fairly, it's, it's mostly obviously the intersection itself, but it's.
Right.
The limits are pretty expansive.
The bridge is a big part of it, but there's a lot of pavement improvement in this too. Resolves a lot of issues. Uh, equipment and refuse, just two things I wanted to highlight. That's page twenty-nine is equipment. And that's the bottom picture. The next, this year we're going to try to introduce an electric vehicle into our fleet. We have a number of used police vehicles and small pickup trucks we use at Public Works for various inspection. Um, and pool vehicles, but if we can kind of jockey around who uses what. And instead of replacing us, one of the pickup trucks, we can replace it with electric rechargeable vehicle and let it become a pool vehicle for all those who go out through the day to a number of different things. Um, and bring in a, a full electric vehicle. Um, they are obviously more expensive than, than a traditional gasoline engine. And there's a little bit of work we have to do on the building for the recharging station. Uh, but it does let us enter, enter ourselves into that sustainability market on, on vehicles. In a location where both our fleet is there to help learn and manage it as well as a fairly easy application. So we can be able to recharge it on a daily basis. So we hope to be able to see electric vehicle, um, driving around next year in the city. And that just fits into the equipment replacement. We replace a number of those vehicles every year and we just want to fit in the electric vehicle. The other one is really from page, uh, one eighteen. That's the, jump ahead a bit, refuse account. There's not much there other than buying a bunch of equipment. And this piece of equipment actually, I'm not sure if anyone's seen the new autoloader out and about. We've had it now. We've been training on it for about six weeks. And to make sure that we can pick up successfully the tip cards without batting them around. Uh, we were in a neighborhood last Saturday. We were out, um, and using it for a full, for a full collection cycle after the holiday. And followed it around for the entire day to make sure.
How'd it work?
What's that?
How'd it work?
Very well. Um, we're, we're really two parts to that. One was make sure the driver felt good in the equipment, that he could actually pick up the toders without tipping them over, throwing them over the top of the truck. And that, um, that without any pre-warrant to the neighborhood, how many toders we could actually service. That didn't have things piled up against them or weren't too close to a tree. And it turns out that very, very high percentage are already highly serviceable. Now, we are just getting ready to mail out a letter next week to the, to the neighborhoods. They'll be introduced, the routes will be introduced with the machine in two weeks. And asking people to make sure there's ample clearance around your big blue toter. In other words, don't put your, don't stack cardboard against it or don't put it, lean it against the stein because then we can't service it with this machine. The driver will have to get out then and pull the toter out the old way. But a very successful piloting, pre-piloting, so we'll actually be out in the neighborhoods next year. And the goal is because of that success would be to replace our next vehicle with a similar autoloader. When I say autoloader, you're just seeing the big arm comes out with the grapple, grabs the toter and dumps it into the bins in the middle of the unit. Uh, so we had really good, we had really good experience with it so far.
What's the ideal distance between the tote and the recycle bin?
We'd like to see three or four feet of clearance on either side. So if there's any shifting around, we figure if we say four feet, we'll probably get two and two's the minimum to really be able to effectively grab it.
I haven't seen a demo yet, Bill, I'm sorry, but the driver can test come out or not?
The driver stands right in the, and stays occupied in the vehicle and operates it with a joystick.
Okay.
And can just watch the whole thing from the cab and set it back down and move to the next one. The goal here is not stepping out of the cab, turning, grabbing, having shoulder injuries. So the real, the real payoff here is reducing shoulder injury. But, um, we already saw just ability to be as fast or faster, just in our very first time we were out there with the machine, so.
Output productivity might go up.
Yep.
You don't ever see a point where you've got automated refuse packers, I mean autonomous?
Hmm, no, no.
Nobody's piloting that yet.
Well, I'm not saying nobody. I'm sure there's places that can pick up refuse autonomously in like a Disney World kind of a place. But everything's so controlled that this is where the container is. It's the only place it can be.
Right here, it's, yeah.
Yeah. But when it's, when it's variability is out of your control, it's really hard to think that autonomous would work in that situation. But who knows? Maybe when I'm eighty and come back here, we'll still see it.
Bill, on page one eighteen.
Yeah.
The fund balance carrying forward each year is zero. Is that normal? Is that what we do? I don't know.
He's special.
It's been on garbage.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, our refuse fund is a separate enterprise fund, so it has a fund balance within it. Most of that money is in there with, uh, operating costs. And so to reflect the capital side of things, I kind of keep the same format in there. But there's actually a, a fund balance in the refuse fund that we maintain according to our financial management policies. So it really doesn't come into play here. The revenue side up at the top where it says refuse fees is a plug number to get that to zero. That's how much of our, uh, annual cost is going towards capital. So the bigger thing to pay attention to is up at the top, the refuse fees. So, and again, it does bounce up a little bit in two thousand twenty-five, but that's what's coming out of our annual refuse, uh, collections.
All right, thanks.
Uh, just one, last two slides are just, um, what we call new projects. Dean alluded to that before. They're not in here yet because we don't know the exact funding sources, but East Central Avenue Improvement Project is one we're actively working on right now. You won't see this in the CIP document. Uh, you'll, you'll only see it here on the screen.
Oh, okay.
That's why you won't see it in there.
It's like, wait a second, I don't remember seeing this.
We're just trying to give you a, a little, because we will have, we do do CIP updates and this very well may appear in an update next year. This is East Central Avenue. We're working on, with our resources right now at the state, on how we should best apply for those state federal funds for this project. Uh, through safety funds and through, uh, two thousand and twenty is another Morpsey application year to apply for major, um, surface transportation dollars. We don't want to miss that cycle in two thousand and twenty for this potential project. So we'll be working with bringing onboard a consultant to be able to put together both a preliminary safety application and a STP application for this project. And this project will do several things. Most importantly, it will rebuild the road to current condition. And even though we resurface it next year, we anticipate by the time this project is ready to construct, that road's going to look like it does today or worse. That we're not going to get, we're not going to get twenty years out of the pavement when we put it down. We'll probably get three or four decent years and then it will be very similar to what we have out there today. So we're hoping this is the last time in two thousand, in next year that we do urban resurfacing on this road as our Band-Aid. And we're working with ODOT now closely on what is the right strategy and funding strategy to move this project forward, to get it rebuilt. The other big component is Lake Street and Central Intersection. That's the one that causes all the westbound backup every day. And so we need to do some major improvements there. Internally, we've already completed a lot of, uh, traffic analysis work to give us an idea of what needs to happen. ODOT's cautioning us to take this in the PDP process slowly, make sure, since ducks turn in a row as we put applications together. So they're very strong and they can be funded. So instead of doing one big application right now in nineteen, we're going to do a very small application to take it through preliminary engineering. Justify the project into state size and then be able to apply for a second safety application for significant several million dollars. Plus in the spring, an STP application through Morpsey for also a significant amount of funding. To be able to, you know, afford to do this cost, this project. You see what I call project effort. We don't really have a cost yet to the project. But we know depending upon what we want to do in the level, it could be ten million dollars, it could be fifty million dollars, might also be eight million dollars if we want to roll it back. But it's a significant effort to the project. But again, this is, this project is, um, probably very supportable at the state level, safety funds and Morpsey level to receive funding.
And it's really one of the, it kind of builds on the Point project because one of the issues that we, was raised last year or two years ago at the Point project when we appeared before track for funding was. What are you going to do once you solve the, the throughput of the, of that bridge? Are you just pushing, are you just pushing that congestion farther west?
Right.
And so that, that's a, that's, you know, it's linked.
It's the third rung of our, of our east side, you know, with William Street and the Point being the first two.
But instructive is, construction is twenty-six, twenty-seven. I mean, it's, you know, it's, that's what you're looking at because it's going to get.
That's my biggest, biggest cause I get is when are you going to fix Central? When are you? So we're going to fix the Point before we're going to fix this.
No, so Central will be resurfaced next year.
Yeah, I heard that.
So we'll get a brand new.
Right.
In three years, it'll be crap again, so.
Most of the complaints we get about East Central is the condition of the pavement.
Right.
Right. And that's going to be done next year. All of the base work we've been doing all the way out to the corporate limits is for East, for Central Avenue. Which are part of the urban resurfacing programs in here. We're projecting that that's going to, that pavement's only going to last.
Three, four years.
And that's why we're trying to tee this up so that we don't have to do another resurfacing. We actually rebuild the road.
It's just, that is, that's why I talk about the state funding, federal funding. That's the schedules that we're on. In order to get it, we agree to all the steps we have to go through. So it is a long process. Now, if everything, in a perfect world, cut that down by two or three years, there's always the possibility we'd go out and build the project. Whether we do a, a CIB loan or we fund it ourselves, knowing that there's a payoff in two thousand and twenty-seven. But that's a fairly complex project. It's going to.
Well, we can't do that and the Point at the same time.
No, Point will be done in twenty-two, twenty-three.
So we don't even talk about moving it up because of the Point.
Right.
We, we can't really move it. I don't have the resources to do it, but, but part of the capital planning side, that's why it always gets complicated. What do you include in a plan? Because if you mention it, some people, or I saw, you know, what, what, what the recollection is, whether it be here in the public, is that, well, I, I, they're doing East Central. Now, that's, it's not, this is clearly one of those unfunded type of projects. But the integral part of capital planning is you're looking down the road and you're trying to anticipate. You know, we spent a lot of time when we had some budget discussions with these sort of things. Are they feasible? And initially it's like, oh gee, no, maybe unless we get a ton of grants, money, but even at that, you know, what's the city's proportionate share? How do we even get in line? How do we get in the game to get some of this sort of stuff? You know, we have to spend some money upfront. How much do we, are we okay spending that may not pay out? And, uh, the other side of it is we, we're, we're trying to focus a little bit more at looking at how and what that means to us. Because we spend a lot of money doing base repair every year and have forever out there. And at some point, if this addresses that such that marginally, we spend a, a fraction of that moving forward. You know, we have to look at that. It's not a revenue source, but it's a cost reduction, uh, potential. And, uh, trying to look at this, if we could tee up a couple of projects, you know, you had this one. And, and then there's another one you'll talk about, I think, or not.
Right, West, well, I won't, it's not up here, but West William is a.
And, and so what we're trying to do is look down the road and can we look at that and say, maybe what we need to do is start setting aside some money. With the intent of making that happen. It might be two thousand, it may be a little bit after that. But if we don't, if we just wait and then, and then hope something materializes, it doesn't really play out that way.
Lisa, that gets back to your question about you might have the availability, you know, we have, looks like we might have that availability. Maybe it makes sense to say that's going to be reserved for future, uh, local match for these projects. I mean, we've, you know, we're pledging, you know, different sources here, including the JED and the Seattle House Tip and some others, so.
But, but for that million dollars in gas tax and license fee, you know, it, it really wasn't worth putting too much time into. It, it, it's possible and that's why we've kind of moved it up a little bit to think in terms of could we, uh, maybe? And how do we plan for some of that to occur?
It is the process that, by which large transportation happens. In fact, our Point project, we're at three quarters of the funding now, which, you know, a lot of our counterparts others, that you're, you're, you've got so much more funding in place than a typical project at this point in your development. So it is a strategy that you have to follow through and the stra- it allows us to enter into it and spend money upfront, as Dean said, in hopes that it pays off. And, um, at least so far the Point's worked, we've, we have twenty-two million dollars out of thirty million dollars now identified for a project. And the vast majority of that is, is not our dollars, is we're leveraging it. So that's how a project like this we would see, but you got to at some point pull the trigger and start down that road. And that's what we're showing right here is that we're going to start this, later this fall and into next year and put the applications in and get some more direction on the project.
If you recall several years ago when we had the tax levy out there and it didn't pass and we broke it down into its component parts. A part of that, we, we said was going to be seed money to get in line to get grant money. And unfortunately, you know, even though we have lots of needs, some of the communities in Ohio that have the resources to do that, they end up getting the grant money. We, we don't even get in line because we don't have our local match or any of those other, other issues that are associated with it now. You know, as Bill mentioned earlier, that, that gives us a little bit of a shot in the arm. It doesn't solve our dilemma, but at least it gets us to a point where we can possibly consider doing some of that.
So really the Point's going to be done twenty, twenty-four?
Twenty-two through twenty-four.
Start in twenty-two.
But completed?
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the earliest we could probably do Central is twenty-seven?
Well, I think we'd be able to start in twenty-five to twenty-six, hopefully.
Yeah.
I mean, we're showing, we're showing a very, showing a timeframe that's fairly elongated. We don't want to say four years if it turns out to be seven. But I think what we've shown is a pretty good guess of if we did receive funding, similar to the Point. That's about what we could look at. Construction would be sometime around twenty-five or twenty-six starting.
And that last resurfacing bill was for East, for Central Corp. Limit to Corp. Limit?
Eight years ago.
Was that eight?
I think it was eight years ago, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, my time does go pretty fast when you're in the realm of these projects. So the last one I just wanted, uh, again, what we call new project, just to give you a heads up on something that just wasn't even in our, wasn't on our agenda. Six weeks ago is this, is this project associated with the Schultz School expansion. And we've, um, we, we've been meeting with the schools and it's this connection right here, which, um, you know, this is cobblestone drive runs all the way to Huck Road. With the intention that it was to hook up at Pennick and come down and complete that loop. And if you look back at the approvals for Schultz School, can you help me out a little?
Do you want your last slide, Bill?
Yeah, just the last slide. Back when Schultz School first came in, there's language and part of their approvals was this road at some day is going to come through this property. And they actually submitted an, uh, an agreement from, from the, uh, school committee saying, we acknowledge this. And so there's been a number of projects out at Schultz School, a number of years, and we've talked, hey, are you, we're, we're pretty serious. Well, when this one came in and said, look, we have so many issues right now with circulation or poor, poor circulation out there. We've really got to be able to advance this project and provide alternative, and that's what this loop here is. They're committing to a large access point on the south side. Whether that's be busing or students, they're still working through that. But, um, right now, you know, everything is focused off the front right now and it's just a mess. So we said, look, this is in our, it's been in our plans, it's been in your approvals, we really need this to happen. And to start providing alternative access points in these neighborhoods, instead of everything having to come to the front of the school. And they're very agreeable to it. They're willing to it. They're obviously looking for a, a partnership with the city in, um, how that exactly gets constructed. The reason I'm showing it is because they're going to look to us, obviously for some construction dollars too. We talked to them about, can they, will they provide all the property at no cost to the city? Will they provide all the design at no cost to the city? Um, and they may look to us for construction dollars on it. So there's no agreement yet, other than the fact that they have agreed this will happen with this project. And we have to figure out just how that happens. So Tom may come back to you, um, in the next several weeks or a couple of months with some additional information about this project. But the, the good news is the school's finally agreeable to, um, wanting this and understanding more of their master plan and realizing they don't really need to build infrastructure south of that road. Into that field that turns into woods that really, they're suited to the north of where that loop is. So they're, they're willing at this point to work with us.
Their first plan had the driveway on the, which side of the north?
West side here.
West side.
Yeah. They had a connection from coming off cobblestone, just kind of a driveway down to here. And kind of dumping right into where everybody already is in there, so.
And I spoke with Kerry Fortman and Matt Weber about that plan and really recommended. Uh, because I think we said it at the last approval, that if they come back for more, that road has to go through.
And we said it at our joint meeting with them.
Yes.
Last year. We made it very clear that we could provide some of the technical assistance to improve the circulation around that school. So now it's going to be a matter of a little bit of negotiation over.
Right.
Construction dollars.
So then will we need to consider any flashing beacons there at some point for kids crossing?
It's, it depends upon, the ball's kind of back in their court deciding how they want it, what kind of circulation changes and access points they want to change. Now that this will be available to them to have a major south. One talk, one discussion was let's move all of our busing to the south side of the school. Then open up both the access points now on the north side to be able, so you can have people coming in from thirty-six into the east driveway and drop-off point. And also people coming in in the Rock Creek area to the west side of the school. They're using that access and essentially almost, um, almost diluting your. to the west side of the school, using that access, and essentially, almost, almost diluting your, your, your volumes in half at those points, maybe making that better. They wanna look internally, and we told them, ultimately, that decision's probably theirs, their internal student circulation. But having the access south of the school and a major point into it was a, is a requirement on our side, and they're, like I said, they, they have agreed to that. And Tom and Heidi will have some more discussions about that. So it's good, it's a good report, but this is the type of thing, like, like Dean mentioned again, we may, we may see an addendum to our capital plan sometime early next year that shows some level of commitment on our side to making this happen, too.
Could I get this slide emailed to me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's, that's, that's really, that's really less than, that's the 10% of all the stuff that Public Works is managing in the CIP. But those are the highlights, and it still took some time, but if there's anything specific on any other projects in there, glad to answer it. Or if you have any follow-up afterwards, feel free just to email them in, and I, Lisa, I'll get to that slide. And if you want, if anyone wants just all this, I can provide that through Tom, too.
Yeah, we can, we can get it out to you.
Thank you.
Plus this slide, yeah.
I just have a general comment. In an ideal world, we'd like to have a few more million dollars every year. But if you think about it, we've doubled the money we've got available to us for road resurfacing. We've got this signalization project, which will help considerably with congestion. We're doing East Williams Street now, followed by the Point, potentially followed by Central. I mean, we're, we're doing a pretty good job of keeping some infrastructure improvements going.
Absolutely.
Given the budget constraints that we've got, so I think you kinda gotta look on the positive side.
Absolutely. We delivered some major projects. Pennsylvania Avenue is just a great, a greatly underutilized, but great project out there.
We need Merrick and Valley Side.
Valley Side, yep.
Valley Side. Every time we visit them. But, right, there's a lot of smiles.
I think we should be proud as a community as what we've gotten done.
I think so.
You know, in my tenure here, we've done a lot of work done. We can always look at.
Glass is half.
Exactly, exactly. So I appreciate the support you've always shown for this.
Excellent job, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, while he's getting teed up there, only because it came up with that picture still up there on the board. Elaine mentioned something about doing an introduction. If we can get Alicia to look this way. We hadn't, I don't know that we had, and other than having her come at a future council meeting, I know she'd love to have a full audience, but this is our new budget and management analyst, Alicia Malone. She started with us May 15th, so she's been here less than four months. Participated in our capital planning process, and she comes to us from the private sector. Most recently, worked for a, a business in Bell Fountain, distributed guns, bows and arrows and all that sort of stuff, bows. So she was into that business, but, you know, doing a lot of analytical work for him. Prior to that, she worked for Rocky Brands in Ohio and then doing some of the same things. She has two master's degrees in mathematics, so that was one of the things, we had quite a few capable applicants, and it's something that really attracted us to it. And just out of happenstance, we were just talking about the Schultz School. She happens to live where you said the road was otherwise going to go up to that point. Her house, I believe, is the first house west of the curve that goes, the, the access road that goes into Schultz Elementary. So I'm not so sure she would've been too keen if they would've directed all that traffic right up to her, to her front door, but anyways.
She's a graduate of our Citizens Academy. You wanna say a few words?
Well, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm really happy to be here. I'm really looking forward to it. You guys have already given me a lot to do, and so I'm looking forward to more. Welcome.
Thank you. What was the name of the company in Bell Fountain?
Um, it was AcuSport, and then it became United Sporting Company.
I think my neighbor worked, Jenny Gerard.
Oh, yeah, she was in HR, right?
Yes. Small work.
As Tom said, Alicia did actually, she moved to Delaware a year or more ago.
A little over a year ago.
A little over a year ago, and after she was here for a while, she took it upon herself to participate in our Citizens Academy at Lee Woods On. And so she was getting active in the community before she even applied for this, before this job was created, and so it's, it's, it's a good sign.
Worked out well for me.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'll start with the Parks Improvement Fund, some of the highlights in that. And we, we talked about this last Monday, was the, one of the things we looked in there was the Parks Master Plan. Page 25. So one of the, the larger items in there was the, the Park Master Plan in 2020, which we anticipated looking at doing the entire plan in that year. We, per Monday, we've looked at moving some of that up, so that'll be another topic of discussion. The Willowbrook Park, we've got access to that this year, that, that Boulder Drive is extended on. And we're gonna be doing a public outreach meeting later this month, and we'll really get direction on where we wanna go with some of the amenities in that park. So that'll, that'll, that feedback will be helpful, and that'll kind of dictate where we go with, with some of those amenities.
Ted, can I stop you?
Yes.
Did we spend some of that money already?
We have not.
We have. Isn't that number less than it used to be?
It's always been 138.
Yeah.
It has?
Yeah.
Why did I imagine in my head it was higher?
Nope.
No?
138 for about eight years.
Yeah.
Maybe I was wishful thinking.
Out there for a while.
I was thinking it was 250.
No, but I.
Doesn't mean that you can always increase the price.
250, I thought you at least said 350 or 400.
Maybe, no, there wasn't a typo there?
That would help at our meeting.
Missing a couple zeros, alright.
Yeah, so that, that'll, look at that in 2020. Another major item in the, in our improvement fund is the, is the Mingo Park. We have, that playground is, is reached, its lifespan's about 20 years old, so we're looking at getting that, that large playground. It's our busiest playground, getting that, that replaced in 2020.
What do you do with the old playgrounds?
Sometimes they're donated, but, but we can't, it has to be through the, a lot of times, the, the actual manufacturer, because the warranty that goes with it. But we don't want that liability.
I understand that.
To just donate out there, but some, some schools take them, some, some private schools will take them, some private individual will take them, too, I guess. But we don't tag our name on those as, when they leave. Those are the, the main highlights. We have the playground equipment, and then in, in the Parks Improvement Fund, if there's any questions, I can answer those.
I had one, and I wrote on my post at turf surface with question marks. So where are we putting a new turf surface? Is that at Mingo Smith?
Where does she, Elise?
Um, I don't know, because I made a note for myself.
We're probably looking at a turf surface at the Veterans Park Playground.
Hmm, no, there was a.
Out in 24.
I don't understand my own note to myself. Okay.
Yeah, the one where I'm, I can think of is.
Oh, here it is.
The playground.
Mingo Park. The project design will also include a turf surface.
Oh, yeah.
That will reduce long-term maintenance costs.
Yeah, we're looking at, similar to the, what we have at Veterans Park.
That's what I was worried about.
Doing a turf surface out there. You'll still have the soft cushy underneath there, but looking at that turf surface in there also.
Not wood chips.
Not wood chips.
Well, I wanted to make sure it was accessible, which.
Yes.
That, that turf surface at Veterans checks that box.
Yes.
But we've had so much trouble with that surface at Veterans.
Yeah, I, I think that has to do more with the, the installation and how it was installed. I mean, they're, they're backing it up and, and keep repairing it, but I think they could've done better with the, the installer.
And it gets so hot.
Right. That's what any, the, the playground chips are the, the ideal for not getting hot, but, yeah, until we get shade. But Mingo wouldn't be as bad, because we have a lot more shade at Mingo.
What about that poured-in-place surface?
Well, that, that's, that's underneath a lot of that, that, that rubber.
Okay.
Surface. That's another option out there, too, but we usually get more life out of the, the turf.
Okay.
From the playground manufacturer.
As long as it's accessible, and then will the playground structure be accessible?
It'll be accessible also, yes.
Like we want it, that's awesome.
Yes.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, most of any, any new playground features we do now, like even Bell Avenue, we just did some improvements out there, we, we made that accessible also.
Okay.
Anything else on the Parks Improvement Fund?
Is the master plan a good value?
At this point, it is. We were just discussing, just, just, well, I didn't realize, Tom was telling me earlier today that when we did the 2002 plan, what, we paid for that plan, I think it was 47.
$50,000, and that was 2002.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it's just the, the expense, whether it's engineering, doing plan, you know, hiring consultants, I.
And the other thing, we're at a point where the strategic plan, the action plan, that'll kind of lead our park system in the future, you know, where we wanna go with that park plan, it will be a good value in the long term. You know, we have a lot of things on the, the South Community Park, the facilities needs, so, and we're in the recreation programming even also.
I would just add, actually, I'm kind of on my way out of Westerville, going to Dublin, they hired Proz Consulting for their Parks Master Planning. In my perspective, and just keeping in touch with people from Parks and Rec in Westerville, I thought they did a wonderful job, and they helped. Westerville actually won a couple of awards, and I know they're kind of like the gold standard for parks. But some of their parks, they modeled based off the community feedback, are really pretty amazing. So I, I think it can kind of open our eyes to what the, what the residents want, and, you know, maybe tastes have changed in terms of like what sort of recreation opportunities and what they wanna see in the parks, like adventure parks. So I, I think it's a neat process to go through, and I think it'll be valuable.
Do you think it would be helpful if they came back, where we could do a little question and answer? I know they made a presentation in the mayor's, which wasn't there, and maybe have them back, where we could ask, because Carol and I have some questions about the Balimia with 300-person survey and a city of 40,000. I'm not a statistician, that seems a little low for the way they do it. So if we could have a conversation with them, it might, you know, help overcome some.
The paper had it wrong, they had 4,000. It's like, it's about, I think, to make it statistically, I could point to Alicia. That's curious. It's about 400, I think, depending on the population, yeah.
But that's separate than this. This is the.
Right. What we're doing is accelerating.
Yeah.
Ted had already recommended it.
Okay.
To occur.
So we're not paying 75, 98?
No, 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 no.
I'm like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
No, no, no.
No.
We're just taking this and moving it.
Okay.
To 19 because of the interest in recreation programming and some of the issues we've got there, so.
Yeah, I think we'd, we could get, probably it'd be good to get Leon here from Proz, too. He'd be a good source.
See if we can do that.
We'll see if we can look at doing that one with her. If there's nothing else, I'll, I'll keep it in the order. On page, I'll go to the, our equipment page really quick, it's on page 29. I'm gonna guess 36 for you, Elaine?
Cause I had 37?
Yeah. Just to highlight some of the things we're looking at here, we do have the, the bucket truck. It's a, we're looking at a used model that will allow us to reach higher, especially in the, in the trees, and, and perform more work there in replacing the one we have now. We're also looking at a electric vehicle, more of a, you've probably seen the High Wesleyan vehicles running around town. We're looking, we, we envisaged them and talked to them about those. And, and what this vehicle, we're looking at for multiple purposes, especially in seasonal, it'll be used year-round, but in seasonal help, we get an influx of seasonal staffs, and we don't all the time have vehicles for them to go out in the parks. This would be an ideal vehicle, it can ride the streets. And also, police have a lot of need for golf carts, which they'll continue to use, but with all the special events. So we thought this might be a good vehicle for them to also try to use also during special events, especially on the weekends. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's basically the same model that High Wesleyan's using, and they, they, they really like the ones they have down there. And they've been using it for quite a few years now, and I think it's a, it's a better alternative for, instead of buying another truck. This is cheaper, and it's, they can get around pretty easily with it. Any questions on the Equipment Replacement Fund?
But your bucket truck, you don't have until 20, 2024, correct?
It should be 2020.
Yeah, 2020, 8,000.
I'm on the wrong, I'm on page 29.
Yeah, I've got 80,000.
You're looking at Public Works. You need to go down to the middle of the page to Parks and Rec.
Oh, there's my problem.
Oh, yeah, I see, you were looking at, yeah.
No comment.
In the past, Parks and Rec would get the, one that's worn out at Public Works would go to Parks. Wouldn't show up in here, because it wouldn't be new.
If there's no questions there, I'll move to the, the Park Impact Fee. In that fund, some of the, the highlights there, the Ross Street Park Improvement, we're, we're gonna be looking at the, we're having another public outreach meeting with them in October, and looking at doing some of those park improvements, expanding that park into the, where we moved out with our maintenance department, we moved out of there, and looking at moving, expanding that park and working with SWCI on that.
What page?
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry, page 43, page 50?
We really are trying to keep up.
Yeah, sorry, because we, I wanna get to the cemetery portion here, too, tonight, too. Yeah, the, the community park, it's a Ross Street Park Improvement, and then also looking, we're, we're really trying to move forward with the South Community Park. You know, looking at down the road, we, we have it in 2023, where hopefully we can zero in on, on a parcel, and maybe, you know, especially looking towards the future and all the growth and development that's going on in the south side. Getting that parcel of land that, that will meet the needs of the, the recreation needs out, and especially in the south side. But in.
You're talking way south, right?
Yeah, down, north of Cheshire, but, yeah, and that area has, has is expanding, I mean, with Terra Alta coming in, a lot of those developments coming in there.
Price of land has to be huge there, isn't it?
Yes. That's one of the difficulties down in that area, but it's probably gonna just keep rising, and, and there's some areas we may, we may be able to, to look at now that, that could be beneficial, that, you know, is before other developments come in, that might help out. But identifying that piece and where it's at, and trying to move forward with that. Another large item is, is the Central Avenue pedestrian corridor. We're, we're really zeroing in on that final design to, to make that final connection from Hough to Lexington. And we are, we do have a grant application out for that, so we'll probably know more about that come October, November. But next year, we will look at getting that constructed and finishing up that final link.
That's the link between.
Lexington and Hough.
Lexington and.
Hough.
And Hough, and that's, challenge has been the, some of those narrow, that narrow area in front of, for those properties.
And as, as moves forward, some of the areas, we'll look at some of the trail improvements, kind of on the south side, that, that south connection down through there. We've got a lot of interest in that, and, and that continues to evolve down there. If there's any questions on the Park Impact Fee.
Is there a way, do you think, we could maybe adjust that Ross Street number up a little bit? Because I know we had talked about a possible water feature there, and if we do that, we're not, that's gonna probably eat up every bit of that 75.
That's been an allowance, Lisa, so, yes, really have not had, we haven't defined that scope well enough.
Okay.
Yes.
Flexibility there.
And I would say.
It's always just been an allowance that we've made, but yes, certainly if you included some sort of a small water feature.
Just knowing what it costs at Veterans Park, because that's, we're gonna get into that quickly.
And I think by the end of the year, we'll have more of a scope of that, that project, but I think that 75 will really go towards, you know, some building demolition and cleaning some of that area up out there a little bit more.
Okay. Yeah, I just, that's probably nowhere near.
Right, right. Well. Yep. The cemetery.
Can we take a five-minute break before we?
Yep. Set up.
You ready? They die, yeah, they die. And mine, we don't need the CFP.
Yes.
I went back, yeah, I was like close to that, yeah, I was looking this up.
Seventy's not bad.
We made that much. I think we're getting a better balance from this company and understanding. Yeah, they're specializing in, it's an apartment that used to do surveys, so specializing. And they can help us, I think, sticking with every year, the relationship with the why. Because in some cases, they'll say the why should leave, in some cases, you should leave, in some cases, you both should leave. It's like it's a, either of the two processes, so. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I got it, yeah, sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
Because I went to look for it last week.
Where is that? If you want, you know, so those are sorry. Lisa, have you been keeping up the data on your Fletcher emails?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think you have one there Saturday, Financial Management.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But they got, they're going to go on the east, the north end of that.
Very exciting. Yes. Very exciting.
Terry Joy is helping out.
Cole, your call.
Good question.
So, some residents from Glen Ross.
Yeah. Oh, I was at Golf Course, I know.
And so I just told them, hey, did you research?
Right, right.
And I said, actually, I was like, is it reasonable? So, you know, come back with stuff, we will, you're blessed. My house is sold, my. Probably. He asked for, he recommended, he asked for how to proceed forward.
Yeah.
And so.
This is the person from.
From August weekend?
Glen Ross.
So.
In the next week.
Tell them to.
What I think they should do, probably.
The wild.
Wild there. But you. I mean, is it, is it.
Because I've been over there. Some of the tours.
Here we've made a year.
Stay in the earth. Last time anyway, I just stated that the indoor water park thing over there by just one of those things. Way over there.
They are, they are.
Since it closed down, it was like a month after we were there, it closed down.
So, it's different than, okay, so it's not the people way you know about.
Still, can you go ahead?
Haven't gotten on the water yet.
It's nice not staying in hotel.
But you've got somebody.
Fifty-four model that supposedly wasn't restored, and all the guys said, I think it could, they missed parting it and taking it apart. Yeah. The one we had was in decent shape, like it's a safety, that a couple of seasons that they have wrecked. We want to get original parts back into it. Those things are expensive. And we need to buy parts.
Jim's got some, she wants.
Martin was our chief.
In my garage, because I had to kick the boat all the way in there, it's too long.
And so I told him that, and I said, you know, and frankly, if you're just going to recommend a no. With the undertaking stuff.
Three million dollars?
The bottom of the boat, which is up on the trailer.
Yeah, what does that mean, is that, is that what it means?
You're freezing.
Where are those at?
It's actually sitting. It's still in there. Fuel line coming back. It was down on the, you know, with the rubber connection, but it actually snapped there, which doesn't create any problems. But I thought they turned off sheets of white because they're afraid just that you're going to come tumbling down.
You have to stay for the cemetery?
We're going to have some massive problems. We actually have to be transiting from the back of the boat because. Well, no, we should have done it first, but I agree to them.
You're right.
You were too, buddy?
Have the same name on it. Oh, yeah, I'm taking, I've learned more about this boat, disassembling this one.
Cleveland Brown Stadium.
Did you do that?
And I also saw they have all these Facebook.
My brother would have figured it out.
Really nice boat.
What about you? Really?
Yeah.
It just.
Are you in the water?
There's nothing to do to get to the shore, and it's sitting there. So, now with all those old wooden boats, even though they look, apparently.
Are they?
Boom, he's out there hunting water.
The Democrats?
You need to have alternative views, not just life.
Thanks, Elaine. I got two feet.
What's this one?
I asked.
Tried your best.
I tried. I was outside, I didn't see it till like three o'clock.
So, Oak Grove.
Ready. We'll try to go through this in a succinct way. We're not here to talk about the master plan per se, we've already gone through that process. We're here more to talk about the action points based on what the master plan came back at us at. And just to refresh your memory a little bit, we undertook this exercise to really give us a blueprint, that cemetery needs a lot of things done. And we wanted to have more of a systematic way of doing that and plus looking at the whole business side of operating that cemetery. For years, you know, the Oak Grove Association struggled and what they would do is they'd go out there and they'd line up another row and, you know, the whole backend of that. It just wasn't an attractive cemetery for new interments out there. But the primary purpose of the master plan was to provide a plan to move forward, also to look at the rules and regulations out there at the cemetery, and to also get us some input on current business practices. So, again, we're not going to touch too much on those topics, we really wanted to focus in on the master plan and what it might mean, just to capital planning on our part, but moving forward. We have had several discussions about this with the finance committee, and a consultant came in at least once, if not twice, and as we moved through that process. But tonight, we wanted to talk a little bit about moving forward with some of the improvements. We're going to kind of tag team here a little bit, actually Ted put together a PowerPoint, and I actually put one together, and we kind of merged them together. But most of the development side of the master plan dealt with recommendations for three primary areas out of the cemetery. And this map here, actually on the right is Sandusky Street, and on the left is Liberty, Liberty Road, and everything in between there is the cemetery. But they, and I think you all had copies provided to you of the master plan, I think we'd sent it out several months ago too. But these were the primary areas that they had made recommendations to start improvements. The area that, on the left, that says Memorial Garden, that's a farm field right now, so that's pretty much just green space. That is one of the prime areas that we do need to make some improvement, we need space. We have no, the only lots that we can sell are infill lots. Either we buy back some lots from people that have purchased them years ago, we don't really have any new space. Unfortunately, the only way we can go with that with traditional burial spaces is to the west, and that whole area back there that, you know, needed some aesthetic improvements. So, what we spent a lot of time with the master plan is looking at what sort of concept, should we just go with straight groves or put some curvilinear pathways into it? And, you know, we talked about a pond and what that might be ultimately, but we said it on the design concept on the right, which is all, I think there's eleven or twelve acres, how it might ultimately be laid out. But our initial improvement that we need to do is to, is really the access point on Liberty Road and trying to improve that so that as people do access the cemetery from that, from that area, it improves the look of it, and then opening up some space for potential traditional interments. That whole larger area, again, from the plan, it indicated eventually we could probably do another seven, eight thousand dollar, or dollars, seven or eight thousand interments of traditional, you know, casket and vault type of burials. Another area that they identified that's part of this, it's the area where it says cremation there on the, on the, on the left side, is an area too that they've designated. It's somewhat adjacent to the veteran burial area, and part of the concept there was to put in an area where we could put cremains in, columbariums, and also eventually maybe have some sort of a gazebo, a shelter, whatever you want to call it, because we really don't have any space out there on the cemetery grounds if someone is just to have a little, you know, to have some sort of a memorial service, to maybe have a place where someone could get up and talk or whatever else. But so we incorporated that into the, into the plan, and the first phase of that is really getting the area laid out and also potential putting some columbariums in there. One of the things we talked about through the master plan process too is that there were certain elements of the development plan that lended themselves to perhaps donations and fundraisers. We're trying to do what we can with the resources we have available, but ultimately, we'd like to tap into perhaps reaching out to the community and say, hey, if we can raise some funds, you know, and I think that area in the center there could lend itself to that as an amenity out there, but we'll have to see. Just real quick, and I was going to talk about that first, I don't know how closely you read the plan, but it does talk about, one of the challenges we've had at that cemetery is we really only have in-ground burial options. The vast majority of them are the traditional casket and in vault in a four-by-eight foot lot. We do bury cremains, but they're all in the ground, so someone can put two cremains on one standard-sized lot, but really, that's the only other option. And more and more people are moving to more, not, you know, different types of interment opportunities. One of the things you'll hear a lot about is columbariums, and columbariums are above ground, mostly granite-type of structures where you have niches and it's cremated remains are put into the columbarium. Another thing that we may touch on a little bit is something called a scatter garden. They're somewhat popular out there. I know we spent a lot of time up at Lakeside on Marblehead, and they just put in a very nice area that's more of a scatter garden. And a scatter garden is where you take cremains and you actually go, and there's a small section of the ground, and typically, it's in a garden type or really a landscaped area. And the cremains are removed from the urn and mixed in with the soil and covered up with mulch or whatever else. And typically, you'll have, you know, a memorial wall or something where there'll be a name and date and all that sort of stuff. And it's, there's a lot of them, and that's, that's a type of interment that I think people want. And obviously, we don't have that capability yet at Oak Grove. This is the other area that they identified as one of the initial phased improvements in this gateway garden. The name they gave to it is actually the area right off of Sandusky Street, South Sandusky, so where it says, the right side of that picture on the left is Sandusky Street. And what they've identified is not just some opportunities to create some additional options for burial, columbariums, the scatter garden, the nature walk area and whatever else. But they also suggested that the entrance into that cemetery really needs to be improved. There's just a lot of asphalt and it just doesn't have an attractive look to it. And so part of that concept plan is to improve upon that. There's a lot to do with people coming and perhaps wanting to be buried in a cemetery like that. It indicates there, there's a cemetery kiosk, one of the things when we moved the office to City Hall, we wanted to eventually reestablish the abilities of people out there wanting to look for a certain grave site or individual. We hope to have a kiosk that has our database, which we have up and running, and they can log in, and they should be able to find, get to wherever they need to go at the cemetery. This was one of the issues that did come up when we had some of the public involvement, because what they were recommending is taking down that house that exists out there and pretty much putting in the picture on the right, obviously, it says remove the house, but put in more of an attractive landscape, probably big brick pavers ultimately phase in, putting in more of those columbariums, but really not just giving another option for burial and revenue generation, but also improving that look from Sandusky Street and really adding to that. The issue about taking down the house is something we'll have to talk about from a policy standpoint. The other area is kind of in the middle of the cemetery. Right now, we have some drainage issues with a drainage course that's eroding, and we've got some storm sewer issues. I think Blake mentioned something that we would be talking about that. I'd be talking about that later. There's bigger storm sewer issues because a lot of our storm sewer system conveys a lot of water west of the cemetery through the cemetery property. And in fact, we've got a below-ground storm sewer that supposedly goes beneath graves and whatever else. So, we may have a bigger, bigger project involved with that. This is more of a smaller-scale issue. And one of the things, we took the consultants out there and did the tour on the side, and it's like it jumped right out of them. That area doesn't look like that now, but they said, I mean, this is great, this is what, this will sell right away because there's a lot of mature trees, it's down in a little area, you have the ability to put in a little walk path in an area like this, and what we could do is we could deal with the erosion problems by putting in a retaining wall that also functions as a columbarium. And, you know, so that top part of that curvy pathway is actually a retaining wall that'll function from a, you know, keeping the ground where it needs to be, but also we could sell spaces in there. And because of the natural setting, you know, they indicated it would be a very, very popular place. All of these improvements, you know, that picture there shows ultimately what would be constructed, what would probably move through phases of that, depending on how, how many spaces we sell. So, what is that? Getting back to what we need to move on is what the consultants have recommended is Phase One with a couple of these improvements out there, we've kind of identified the cost, the Memorial Garden, Phase A, our one A, which is the back part, the traditional burial space, and then the cremation area as part of that Memorial Garden. And then the gateway garden is the entryway. And they've got some cost projections that they put into that, which includes landscaping and putting in a lot of the hardscape stuff, even though we may not have, over time, we'll add more columbariums and as demand increases for that. But one hundred and seventy-three, two thirty-one, and two twenty, the Creek Walk Garden, which is what I just talked about, that's the total price to build it all. At some point, we really want to look if there's a way we can incorporate that. Some of it may come from storm sewer funding because we're also addressing the storm sewer issue. We really like to see a way to incorporate that into an improvement out there too, because I think it'll really help stimulate a lot of interest in that cemetery. Plus, it provides, as you go through the older parts of the cemetery, it just improves the, you know, the look and aesthetics of it. One of the things, again, we were going to mention is that, you know, it's not just a cemetery there for burial interments. It gets used quite a bit with people walking and biking. I know when we had the public meeting, there were people there that, they were there because they liked to ride their bike through the cemetery. And so part of this is improving that aesthetics to, again, incorporate that into it, but, you know, so it's not just a cemetery, it really is part of our park system too. We spent some time working with the people up in Marion, they have a pretty decent cemetery up there, and they've been very, very proactive over the years. These are actually burial options that they currently have, and they have quite a. These are actually burial options that they currently have and they have quite a few of them up there. Obviously the two items on the, the left are columbariums and most of them are all full. On the right are more different ways that I think people are utilizing internment options. Thing at the bottom is technically a boulder. That's what it's referred to. On the top you'll see there's more of those and, and there's benches and all kinds of different ways that people can be interred. The important part of it though is the, the, the landscape part of it. You just don't go plop that out in the middle of a grassy field. And that's what we hope to accomplish with these improvements is to provide for that, that it looks nice and it, and it fits into the area. Just to give an example of what it might mean from a revenue stream, this is mostly information coming from the cemetery up in Marion. So this is a pretty, now it's kind of, you know, on concrete, it doesn't look all that attractive from the, the view of the picture, but there are, is landscaping around it. But each, there's like four of those. Each one of those columbariums, they're, they're forty-eight niche columbariums. So on either side you can put twenty-four internments in there. To buy that granite and put that concrete down, you're gonna pay for each one about seven to ten thousand dollars and that's probably on the high side. You can get them less than that. The cemetery up in Marion charges two thousand dollars per niche. So to put somebody in there is two thousand dollars plus, A, you buy the, the niche, but then when you actually inter somebody, there's a cost to actually do it of five hundred and fifty dollars. So the total revenue for one of those columbariums is just, do the math, twenty-five fifty times forty-eight, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And, you know, you look at that cost and, 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 and it, it really adds capabilities from a cash flow standpoint to help, you know, make that cemetery more viable. The consultant, when they came in and we talked about, you know, the popularity and right now, I think he indicated in here that across the country about forty-eight percent of the people are being cremated and looking for this option, but they only expect that to grow and fifteen, twenty, it'll be seventy, eighty percent. It, it, it's, it's a very viable, it takes up a lot less space. That same forty-eight traditional burial would, would take up a lot more ground. And again, based on people we've talked to, it'll be a popular option. Couple of people that attended the public meeting were very excited because they were looking for these sort of options and waiting and hoping that at some point, because they wanted to get buried in Delaware, they were really hoping that there'd be some option like this at Oak Grove. Another example with some of these other, not just a big slab of granite, I actually pulled that out of a flyer, I hit those all the time, is that for fifty-five hundred dollars, we as the cemetery could purchase those seven different options or eight or however many are there. But the math on that, because they have some of these up in, in Marion, so for fifty-five hundred dollars, it would be the cost of those seven personal cremation monuments. With what we could charge, we would actually have a revenue of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. And, and that includes the internment space and, and the lot. And as we looked around up in Marion, they have a lot of those and there's throughout the, the cemetery. And it kind of gives you the ability to fill in and do some landscaping and do some creative things. So it's another thing we're, we're looking at trying to incorporate. I mentioned earlier, there was three recommendations, phases that, that the consultant recommended taking on first. And if we were to do that, you know, the, the cost, at least their projections, about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So I did a little, a quick calculation. If we were to finance that, and we do have a financing coming up the first part of next year, that's what the debt service would be on that. And, you know, I think at a minimum, I think we would net from a cash flow standpoint, two thousand dollars for each internment. So again, just to put that in connection to something, you know, would we be able to sell twenty-three niches a year? And I'm reasonably confident, I mean, there is a certain degree of risk that it takes longer. But at the end of the day, it's not just, we're just gonna plop a bunch of these columbariums out there. Most of that six twenty-five is going to aesthetic improvements out there at that cemetery. And, and really, really that's what is needed because without that, it is just, it's gonna be a continual downward trend and are subsidizing it because if we don't sell spaces out there, we still have to maintain it. And so we're still gonna have a lot of the operating cost. And it, 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 it's as important as anything is to kind of elevate that, the feel and the look out there and really, and, and plus something I think we can be proud of as a So from a, before I get into that, from a capital funding standpoint, we do have some money appropriated this year and we still have some, and it's coming from some of the residual money that came from the, the perpetual funds when Oak Grove Association ran the cemetery. What we would like to do is to move forward with this as just a concept plan. We've reached out, Ted's reached out and he can talk a little bit about that, but I think we'd like to move forward yet before the end of the year and actually get some plans put together that we can actually start putting these improvements in. And hopefully be in a position by the first part of the year that we can actually turn some dirt out there, so to speak. And the financing of that, I could kind of coordinate with the, the other borrowings we're gonna be doing at the first part of the year. I'm talking a lot of attention.
I don't know, I have two weeks ahead, I just spoke with, who did the master plan and was, Jose Castro and, just doing some of the design portion of it, there, there's a, there's a economical advantage of doing, you know, designing those three pha-, three or four phases upfront as opposed to doing it individually. So, but going forward with those, a lot of those things will really help improve the, the area as more of a park. I think that's kind of the result, kind of what that is and I think as that park setting, it, it'll really become an attraction and more of an asset to the city. Well, Dean's gonna get some.
Plus it provides a future.
Yeah.
I mean, the trend right now, if you take a look at the report, is a, a much larger percentage of people are electing for the columbarium approach and, and, you know, just that's more and more common. We don't provide for that right now and we're a little behind. So if we're gonna operate this cemetery and I think there's a little responsibility to the community that we kind of keep up with it because there's no other provider, at least in the city. I mean, there's other alternatives, but any thoughts?
I agree. I mean, I'm no expert in cemeteries, but we've been visiting my mother-in-law at a large cemetery in Dayton and they have columbariums. Now that we have this plan, I've been noticing more. They have a variety of these options there and they certainly seem to be utilized.
I'm reasonably confident, although I tend to be conservative. I honestly think.
Not you.
It might take a little bit to get, because part of this is, is the marketing, we need to do a bit more of that, make people aware that this isn't just what they maybe assumed. And in the first couple of years, and that's why the debt service is kind of geared that way, but I, I think we'll get to the point where, right now, we're probably subsidizing that cemetery operation about seventy-five thousand dollars a year or more. And I think that would only get larger if we don't do something because A, we just don't have spaces to sell, but I think we'll get to the point where we'll be able to dramatically reduce that because there will be cash, positive cash flow coming in from these types of sales to offset our other costs. The traditional, if we sell a burial plot to somebody, it's a thousand dollars, then it might be seven fifty or eight hundred dollars when we actually inter, dig the grave. It just doesn't generate revenue to, to really cover that cost. Because it's not just, you know, the space and putting somebody in, we gotta maintain that grave and mow it and weed eat it and all that sort of stuff. These things tend to lend themselves, you've got forty-eight people in a, in a, in a, in a big columbarium and other than, you know, blowing the weed leaves off the area, the maintenance costs associated with that on a per unit basis is much, much less.
So Dean, I'm just a little confused about costs. On page twenty-one, they've laid out four different projects that come to roughly three and a half million dollars. The thing you just showed us is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then if you go back here a few more pages, they've got a phase one and phase two for, on page twenty-five, twenty-six for the memorial garden. What's our overall, if we, if we have a whole plan, is that what's on page twenty-one?
No, what he showed us was the top of pages.
So pa-, page twenty-one was the consultants came in and said, if, if you do all of the improvements.
Right.
The complete improvement, not just the first phase of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be three point four, six million. They wouldn't recommend doing that because we'd have way more capacity than we would ever need.
Right.
You wanna, you wanna get some cash flow from selling some of these spaces to help fund future improvements. So if you flip back a few more pages, they had, so what are they recommending as far as the phasing approach? And they had phase, I think they got tripped up a little bit in the 1A and 1, 2. But in essence, that's where these numbers come from, the, the 230, the, the 220 and the 170, 173. The 585, we kind of put it in there, but, you know, I think we need to, we need, you know, we can always move on, depending on how, but I, I think it's, I think it'll be a popular area, but, you know, we'll have to consider that and see once what the costs come in. I think doing actual design work will give us a little bit better feel for what we're really looking at. And, and again, it's not really incorporated into the capital plan per se because, other than having some, I think, discussion with the finance committee, I think they were somewhat supportive of moving forward, we, we really wanted to get some input back from council. It's not just the numbers and whatever else. Obviously, one of the other things that came up as part of that, uh, uh, public outreach was, you know, the, the house and the historic society. And, you know, I had some dialogue with them, we invited them to come out and take a look at it. But I think the only comments, at least that they shared, other than what showed up in some publications, was that, you know, that, that, you know, they were really interested in preserving that history. I communicated at one point in time, and there's a lot of history in that cemetery that you'll see in the pictures I'm gonna show you in a little bit, is, is going away. Just the people interred out there and, and there's a cost to do that and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And at the end of the day, there's not a lot of resources out there and nobody really stepped up to say what we would even do with the house. But at the end of the day, I think if, if we really are interested in historic preservation, preserving that, especially those older sections of the cemetery, there's a lot of history out there, generals and all this sort of stuff. All these people's family members are long gone. And, you know, either we just let them fall apart or we have to find some funding to do it and to generate some revenue to help offset some of that cost. Because right now, all we've been doing is mowing the grass and trying to take care of the grounds. It's just not resources to go in and, and take care of some of this stuff. I think with doing this and especially that entryway, we have to make the site, people wanna, are gonna wanna, you know, they need to, want to be buried there and.
Needs to be inviting.
Yeah.
And it's just not inviting with all that concrete.
And the house.
Yeah, and it, it's not and it is, and it's very old, it just needs to be refreshed. And I think not just will become popular as, as, as a cemetery and hopefully people that live here and always want to be buried here can feel comfortable doing that and not feel like they have to go someplace else. But I think it does improve the whole site in and of itself. And, and like I said, there are elements, there are a lot of people that walk out there and do different things like that. And I think it just really, really needs a shot in the arm. Fortunately in this situation, I think there's going to be a revenue source that's gonna help fund that and then some. But, I don't know if we had, what your thoughts are, because we can, we can move forward. Obviously we can get, we'll have better information, we'll come back. If you wanna use the finance committee as the conduit, once we get some of these final design estimates and, and really tighten this up a little bit, because it's all kind of projected information. But the concepts are there and I think that they're all very, very doable and I think they make sense. And, and the input we did get from the citizens is, you know, it's a good plan and, and we like those type of improvements, so.
I think we owe it to our citizens. I mean, I came to open the meeting here and I just, you know, we, we need to do it, period.
I agree. Chris, I know you've spent time there. I mean, just what.
I mean, I like everything I see, pretty much.
Okay, well, we'll move forward with, with getting that design lined up. There is one other thing I want to touch on, it, it's not, it's somewhat of a, but it is a financial issue. And, and we've had some issues and some complaints and some different things like that have come forward. As I mentioned, there, there, if you go out there on that site, I just, we just did another tour the other day, we've spent the last three or four or five months during our busy time out there with some people. We've inventoried the condition of all the, of the monuments and all the, the, the area out there. We've got a really, really good inventory now of what the problems are based on broken headstones or foundations or ones that are leaning and, and just the whole ball of wax. So I wanted to capture that so we could kind of look at a systematic approach to trying to address it. These are just some pictures from out there the other day and you can see there's all kinds of issues and it does tend to look like nobody cares. But it's tough because some of these things are really, really old. And when they were put in there, they just didn't approach it the way we would now and, and there's settling of the grounds and there is slopes and all kinds of different things. There's a lot of challenges out there with that. And, and really to any great extent, we haven't been able to do a lot with it even since we took it over. Cemetery Association did virtually nothing. Unfortunately, the other side of it, there's vandalism that occurs out there and it's too bad, but it does happen. One of the things, we did reach out a couple of years ago, and Long Stretth is a company out of Galleon, Ohio, and they really focus on cemetery maintenance and repair. And they actually gave us a proposal to, to fix six hundred and thirty-two monuments. They went through the whole cemetery and identified some of the, the really, really more significant issues. And they had a number, again, it's, it's, it's four or five years old, but I think, did we reach out to them recently?
Yeah, they said they would honor that.
They would honor that. But they would come in for a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars or basically two hundred and twenty-five on, on average, some of them would be more than that. Some of the, the ones we were looking at, I mean, they're just massive. I don't know, you know, just to lift the stone to be able to reset, it's going to take some, some effort. But we do have a little, probably about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, some of those perpetual care funds. What I'd like to do, it kind of takes away our, a little bit of our cushion there, that cemetery fund. I just don't know that we're with our staff, we don't have the equipment, the capability to go in and address that. What we'd really like to do as part of this, but, but get going on that is perhaps to bring them in and start a process, you know, from a policy standpoint, are we gonna, hopefully we don't have as much of that into the future with some of the newer sections. You know, we put a lot better foundation and, and some of that sort of stuff. But, you know, there is a policy, it is the city's responsibility to take care of these things. Some of them, some of the old ones, I mean, they're, they're really thin. And, you know, what you think, the old tombstone, and we talked about that the other day, what we may need to do is actually take them down and lay them down, find a way to keep it a little bit more permanent, but it's gonna be more flush because we found on some of the ones where years ago they came in, put those into concrete and guess what? Next time anything happened, boom, they break because now it's rigid, whereas in the past they just lean and whatever else. But really look at trying to address some of that and, and hopefully move forward with that. It's, it's gonna, again, it's, there's not really, it's one of those costs we're just gonna have to bear, I think, as a city, but again, there's a policy element to it. I don't know what your thoughts are related to that. We, I mean, we can't reach out to next, and like I said, on most of these, it's.
Sometimes I see the prices, like fixing clean six hundred and thirty-two monuments for a hundred and forty-two thousand. I mean, some people work an entire year and don't even come close to making a hundred and forty-two thousand. It's like, couldn't we hire somebody and?
Well, it's two hundred and twenty-five a monument.
Right.
Yeah, and if you can see the equipment.
And lifting the monument and lifting those.
It just seems crazy that, just that price just seems insurmountable.
When you look at it in totality, it's a lot, but when you go out there and what we've done, as I said, maybe we ought to get out there on a tour, when you look at a, a big monument there and you say, two hundred and twenty-five, you gotta lift, you gotta have a piece of equipment that you can get in between because, you know, there's, you don't wanna break everything, get to it.
Right.
And then you gotta lift that out, you gotta repair it. I mean, some of those, on average, it's gonna be five, six hours of labor just to do that. And then you start doing the math and, and, and nobody works for five dollars an hour anymore.
Right.
So you'd be surprised how quickly it can add up. And we, at times, hope that we could kind of get back into doing that, but again, it takes sometimes some specialized equipment. You need to know what you're doing, it doesn't make any sense to go do this and then just.
Break them or?
Have it reh-.
This is probably a whole team of people, not just one or, one person.
Right, it's, it's, it's multiple people, but.
I wonder if this is something, though, that we might be able to generate donations for cleaning up the cemetery, the history and cemetery, it might be something we could, you know?
Yeah, and in fact, I kind of posed that to the historic preservation people. I said, you know, if you're really into it, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of baffled why you're not concerned about the fact that some of these things are, or whatever else, they just seem to be focused on saving that house. But be that as it may, that was another thing we had talked about at one point in time about how we can do more outreach. And, and it was one of the things that we had talked with city council a couple of years ago about having some sort of an advisory committee. I know we've got lots of committees, I don't necessarily need to have any more, but we need to find a way, not just to market the cemetery, but to really reach out to the community. People will donate money for things like this. And I think especially if we get the ball rolling and see some things happening out there, it might be more apt. And so part of the process was to try to identify some things that lend themselves to say, you know, as opposed to somebody that, well, just donate money, well, we'll, we'll use it somehow to fix things up. If we have some targeted things.
You're surprised.
And this could be one of them. I think if we get the ball rolling and we say, well, we got some of the most critical ones, but if we can get some more funding, we pretty much tapped out some of the sources we had, we can do even more.
There's one section out there that, that the family donated money and they brought
There's one section out there that, um, that the family donated money and they brought in a, a Long Stret, I think, to come in and do it. You, you would believe the difference, the section, which, I mean, it's the same, same monuments, but they're cleaned and reset and it just looks.
It, it was a family plot, it was the powers and one of the last persons that passed away, it was four or five years ago and his will, he left money because it, it, it was a, a larger area, probably, you know, as big as the area we're sitting in, including council. And, I mean, they were in all conditions and, and just whatever else and he left money, I mean, it was like, what, seven or eight thousand dollars. Um, and, and that came in and they, it makes a big difference. But, uh, unfortunately, that, that's few and far between, um, nobody's stepping up. Uh, I don't know, I haven't, I've heard of anybody coming in and saying, hey, I'd like to, it's my relative and I'd like to fix that, uh, what's been broken, so.
We can look at some other examples too, there might be a, a way to do that. I mean, maybe there's a way to raise. But again, it's, the other stuff, the other capital work that Dean had described earlier is just going to have to be us. Is there consensus to at least take this, move it ahead because?
Can we just review some key points in why the house is not savable?
I, I think the house is, any structure is savable. The question is, is what's the highest and best use of that piece of, of that house? The, the cemetery, the, the consultants are recommending that it, to establish the gateway and to make that a more defining entryway coming into that cemetery. Plus to put, I don't know what, what's the, uh, there's a slide that shows what's going to be there. That's the location that they're recommending for what they're calling, what are they calling it?
The gateway guard.
Coming in, if we're going to.
But I thought that there were some real serious structural issues with the house.
Oh, there are, I mean, it's a, it's a wreck.
Well, it's a mess, but, and it was when we, when we took it over. But ironically, before doing this, to me, and I think Tom probably remembers, I was sitting there trying to come up with, if we could maybe put twenty-five thousand dollars into that house. At least get it to the point where we could rent it out to somebody, that's what it was being done by the association. It was just a rental and it wasn't a very good rental, but hey, I thought if nothing else, it might generate some money to help offset the cost. So that's kind of what I was, something to use it for, I even kicked around, although Tom didn't think somebody, anybody would want to rent it out, but people would rent it out. Um, whether we could try to get a monument company in there or something like that. But I'd never heard anything indicated about the historical significance of the house, even as we transitioned from Oak Grove. Now, whether it is or not, I, I don't, I'm, I'm all about historic preservation. I'm not sure what, and that's, I think what we should do in reaching back out to the historic society is say, you know, you, you really need to come up with a, a viable plan. It's not like we would just take this down just to create green space. The challenge on our part is we got to pick what history we want to preserve. And the reality of it is, that has a huge impact, that entryway, that view as you go down South Sandusky Street. People are making some improvements on that section of that road. Would be nice, too, if ours, we added to that, we had a nice garden-like view as people looked into the cemetery, something we could be proud of as residents or whatever else. But it also has a huge impact on our ability to generate momentum out there. Hopefully at some point be able to do even more with preserving the rest of the history out there, uh, in, in the monuments. But I think if nothing else, I mentioned Tom, we, we can reach out to them, nothing's cut in stone yet, but if they've got a viable option.
I just think the historic society has, they have the Meeker Homestead, which is a huge asset they have now. Plus they have the, the Kreider, Kreidler, uh, Library on East Williams Street there. You know, that's expensive to maintain property. And I think the higher, better use right now is what's being recommended. That helps to sustain the, that cemetery over the long haul and, uh, not that that house really doesn't.
But, you know, a cemetery is to pay respect, so we need to respect those that are, that are buried there, not a house.
Right.
That's just my opinion, that's what a cemetery is.
And that's what I think, and one of the things they, I think they talked a little bit about is I think they want somewhat of a staging area and that, actually they've got another, and, and that's fine. They have a tour that they charge people money for, that's coming up here in a couple of weeks.
Pay for some of the, um, uh.
Yeah, and it's not cheap, it's ten dollars to go on their little tour. But, and then people dress in, period, and that's all great, but, I mean, that, that, you have to put, you, you're probably looking at at least three hundred thousand dollars just to get that house to where you could actually put somebody, you know, it's a public building. And I'm, I'm not sure what the use might be, I think as we thought broader, not so much about that house at the cemetery site. And I shared this, but we've always focused in on that barn, which is like the second oldest barn, I think, in either Delaware or Delaware County. It's kind of neat and we've spent some money to preserve that and at some point down the road, one of the things we're looking to do with the whole layout plan is to move our maintenance operation off, back into the one corner. So it's not there front and center. Uh, but that barn, whether at some point, again, something that lend itself to getting some donations from people, we could raise some money and kind of make that a little bit more, not so much an event space. People are going to come there to have a wedding reception, but something if associated with it, that there is a place that somebody did have a memorial service, they could perhaps go there and have a lunch afterwards for the people that came and whatever else. And preserve that and put some resources into preserving that. That I've heard a lot of people talk about over the years about, please save that barn. I, 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 I don't mind if it, there is some history, but I've never heard anybody comment about the house.
So you want us to proceed?
I do.
Yes.
Okay. I think, you know, this has been helpful, I know this is really what we wanted to try to get some direction and that's helpful and.
Color did we paint that barn, is it red? That barn.
Did we paint it?
Yeah, it's red.
I think we should have painted it white or just something that's not so. I know, I was, I was thinking about that, you know, if you're going to use it for something like that.
I wanted to put a mail pouch.
Thank you.
That's all we have, um, we can, um, if there's nothing else, we've got the meeting on the, the next meeting would be any wrap-up items and, um, maybe we could talk parking. I'm not sure we'll be at that stage, but we might be able at least to scratch the surface on some of the.
Colin and I are going to get together after the COSI meeting next week and chat a little bit, I hope that we'll be reporting, we'll see you.
Okay, yep. So that's what we've got.
Okay, question to adjourn?
So we.
We are adjourned at eight thirty-seven, it's not bad, something that's over.
Uh, so we're on the COSI, it's, it's starting for next spring.
What's that?
Don't lie.
No, I'm not lying.